I'm going to call the Murfreesboro City Council Special Meeting. This meeting today is specifically for interviews for candidates for city manager. Adam, did we have anyone sign up for public comment?
He did not.
Okay. All right, if you'll bow with me, we'll pray and then do the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, I ask you today just to give us guidance, give us wisdom, give us the ability to use discernment to make a decision that is not best for an individual but best for a community. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity that you've given each one of us to be in these leadership positions, to be able to make these decisions. We again say a special prayer for the Sullivan family today and continue to lift them up and to lift Asher up for healing. Lord, we love you and we praise you. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So council members, we've allotted about an hour for each candidate today. Clearly, if it takes longer, we will take longer. You have, our first person will be Mr. Gore, and you have Mr. Gore's CV in front of you. You also have a copy of his PowerPoint presentation. You also have applications where the employment applications that our Employee Services took. You have a sample of questions, just in case anyone wanted to ask questions. And then, last but not least, you've got the Executive Committee that did interviews last Wednesday, I believe. You've got their ratings on, they did two panels, they did one interview, interviewed one candidate, then interviewed a second candidate at the same time, and then you have their ratings for each of the internal applicants. And we'll say, I think it's a sign of a good organization that we do have two good, a sign of a good organization that we do have qualified internal applicants to be able to go through this process. It's going to be a tough decision, but whatever decision we make does not mean that either of these candidates were not qualified and do not represent our city well. Mr. Gore, we're going to turn it over to you.
Good morning. Thank you all for this opportunity. You know, whenever you, I know you guys, the PowerPoint thing is a little bit of a, I know you make fun of me a little bit, but I really struggled, I really struggled with the, with, not struggled, but trying to find the perfect title for this. So chasing perfection is what I came up with, and it comes back to Vince Lombardi quote, he's the, with the Green Bay Packers head coach, won the first two Super Bowls. He said that we will never be able to achieve perfection, but if we chase perfection, we will be able to achieve excellence. So that's, that's what we're trying to do here, is we're trying to achieve excellence by chasing perfection. So before I go through this, I'll give you a little, this kind of a little bit of agenda. John Maxwell, I don't know if you all know him, he's a, he wrote a book called The Twenty One Irrefutable Leadership Laws. Leadership Law Number Four was the law of navigation. He says, "Anyone can steer the ship, but it takes a leader to chart the course." So I'm going to chart the course a little bit for you today. Just so you all know, this is about a 20-minute deal, so it's not, I hope it's not too long, but I hope it's entertaining. So we'll talk about the destination first, then we're going to talk about starting the journey, getting into ship shape, a port of call revamp, and then getting into the swing. So this will make more sense as we go through the presentation. But how, before we get into that, I want to, I want to discuss vision, mission, culture, and values, and how they're related to the journey. So using that same navigation theme, vision, right, for, if you were on a seaworthy vessel, you want to arrive at your destination safe and sound. The mission is to keep the ship in tip-top shape, avoid all the hazards. Culture, you want to get up early, hoist the sails, swab the deck, maintain the watch, check the star charts and maintain good habits. And really, the values, it requires discipline, focus, initiative, commitment, determination, and consistency. So this will make more sense again, too, as I get, I'll tie this back into what I'm about to go through. So establishing a vision, the destination. I want to talk about a learning organization, change, and taking control of change. So the vision that I see is to grow as a learning organization. And one may ask, what is a learning organization? Well, we do a lot of this now, but I think we can always do better. Again, that chasing perfection motif, but we nurture, they nurture creative thinking, value continuous learning, build leaders, and help others get ahead. They invest in human capital, see people as the most valued resource, offer recognition and appreciation, embrace taking calculated risks, extend beyond their comfort zones at times, take a team approach to problem solving, align individuals with teams, and we have fun. We also look for flexibility and feedback, and we're proactive, facilitate partnerships. Okay? So that's, that's kind of the goal. I'd say this when I talk about change being the only constant, we've all heard that before. And I used to say that learning organizations were change-ready and embraced change, but I recently read that reinvention is taking control of change. So I think that the statement needs to be made that learning organizations are reinventors, or learning organizations take control of change, and that's what we want to do with our public services. We want to constantly be ahead of change, taking control of it, and reinventing Murfreesboro to serve our growing community. So the vision, again, you create an organizational culture to create that learning organization, and this is kind of the kicker. At the end of the journey, there really is no final destination, because the destination is always moving to a greater level of skills and capabilities to serve the public by constantly reinventing. So as soon as you think you've arrived, things change, and you gotta, you gotta move, move to that next level of service and that next level of capability. So, starting the journey, this is going back to maybe the beginning. What do we do to get into ship shape? Got to start doing small things right, know what we're measuring, and know what we need to be measuring in order to manage better. So initiating change, doing the small things right, preparing agendas for meetings that have decision points, reading materials, preparing for meetings, sending out notes, follow-up emails with major decision points achieved, making teams aware of changes in progress or unforeseen challenges. Those need to be in writing, return phone calls, respond to meeting invites, be on time, notify others if you're arriving late. Again, these are small things that every organization, good organization does well. It's not necessarily micromanaging, it's just getting things efficient, taking an hour-and-a-half meeting and making it a 30-minute meeting, because there are things that need to get done, and meetings that go too long are just time wasters. So measure-to-manage mindset, this is another thing, and we did a lot of this with, at the Water Resources Department when we got into effective utility management. What are we measuring? What are our key performance indicators? What are the metrics that we need to react to on very many different levels? Compliance, workload, efficiencies, and so forth. So, and what this does, and we do, we all do a lot of dash, there are several departments that do dashboards right now, I think every department should be doing a dashboard. You all need to know what's being measured and have confidence that we're managing those things. Sometimes it's just a little innocuous as to what's the goal, what's the objective? And really, what this does is it springboards you into a higher level of what should we be measuring to manage better? And we ran into this when we started EUM, we started participating in the American Water Works Association Benchmarking Assessment. We couldn't complete a lot of that assessment, because we didn't have systems in place to provide the data or the analytics to participate. A lot of it, our customer call center was one of those things. So we had to get a whole new phone system, start measuring things we'd never managed before, just so we could even measure ourself against our peers. When I first became the Director in 2012 at Water Resources, John Santamore asked me, he said, "Darren, are we, are we lean? Are we fat? Are we right-sized as an organization?" And I didn't know. I said, "John, I don't know. We're going to have to find out." And when you start benchmarking yourself against peers, you start to, you start to see yourself in the, in the proper frame of reference or context of your peer utilities, and in this case, peer cities. So that's what we're trying to bring over to the, to some of the departments, is we want to get into that measure-to-manage mindset. So this is the port of call revamp, where we're talking about leading a cultural reset. Take a little bit of time here to kind of go through this, because this is kind of the engine or the meat of what, where I think we ultimately need to, to go as an organization. So I did look up service-centric, I think that's a real word, but charting the service-centric mission. So we always talk about improving Murfreesboro resident quality of life. It's on our letterhead, that's kind of, you know, all the departments are saying, hey, we want to improve residential quality of life. I went ahead and springboarded a little bit off that and changed it, said, hey, what about, we also want to improve Murfreesboro stakeholder interaction. We want to improve the interactions that developers have with us, that contractors have with us, that nonprofits have with us. And lastly, we'd also want to improve Murfreesboro visitor experience. We want people to come to Murfreesboro and share that experience and talk well about us. So that, in a large part from our organizational perspective, is to deliver efficient services from utilities, public safety, recreation, transportation, public works, and then also to deliver effective services to those frontline departments with a good internal service team, and then obviously the support of, of city council. You guys define the priorities that really define what the improvement metric looks like. So we can define it this way, develop and deliver services in as efficient, effective means possible, where employees engage with citizens and stakeholders in a manner that is receptive. We deal with the issues that are concerned right now, we're easy, we're reliable and painless. The first time and every time across all interactions, we're speedy, respectful of time and resources, and we're safe. And again, all of those really revolve around the council priorities that you all have Those four attributes can apply to any priority that the city council sees as, as necessary to improve Murfreesboro. So a service-centric mission requires, I think, right now, a cultural reset. So what habits will allow us to more easily communicate, collaborate, and build bridges versus becoming more isolated and forming silos? Came up with this term swing, and it was based on, I don't know if anybody's read The Boys in the Book, in the boat, about 1938, eight-man crew that, it was actually the junior varsity team of the University of Washington that ended up winning the gold medal in Berlin right before World War II. But they define the swing in that book as, "When all eight oarsmen are rowing in such perfect unison that no single action by anyone is out of sync with those of all the others." And George Pocock, who was, he built the actual, what do you call, the SCIF, or I'm not sure what they call that, but, "To be a championship caliber, a crew must have total confidence in each other, confident that no man will get the full weight of the pull." So that's what we're trying to define. And going a little bit further, swing is comprised of cadence, pull, and flow, and so cadence is clear, regular intervals of communication and collaboration that leads to discipline and team cohesion, cohesion. Pull requires the person downstream in the workflow to tell their upstream partner what they need to better perform, and this has a lot to do with servant leadership, where people have confidence that their supervisors and their leaders are there to serve them and supply them with the resources they need to do their jobs well. And again, flow, it's that everything's running in sync, no start-stop. We're not constantly working busy work, but you know that value is being created, and that your team can sense and see that you're progressing towards completion and success. This is kind of a, this is the real engine to this. I've talked about the, the core values maybe that go into a culture focused on swing, conduct, doing the right things, that's serving one another and making authority commensurate with responsibility. We want to push for effectiveness and efficiency. We want service-centric customer focus. We want to do things the right way. We want to be transparent. We want to collaborate. We want to maintain integrity. We want to humbly serve each other and humbly serve the public. We want to be a change champion, and we want to control change through reinvention. The other is the communication aspect. We want to maintain that communication cadence. We want to ensure that there's proportionate communication. We, I look at this as kind of a three-front army, with council, community, and staff. I think all of those, if you get out of alignment on your communication with any one of those folks, the others feel a little bit left out and maybe push back a little bit, that they're not being part of the process. And then company, we're only as good as the company we keep. We want to prioritize recruitment and retention, consistently address pay scale, and prepare employees for, for internal promotions. And this is where I think this is a very transferable document. If you see these items underneath here, these are hyperlinks that take you to our cornerstone learning management system that has been, hold on. Crap, did I get that right? No, I messed up. Hold on. So this is what takes you to that cornerstone, and you can actually take one of these learning modules. This is on servant leadership. It's about a 10-minute lesson. It asks you a few questions after you go through the module. All of those blocks that I put in there, I actually did this for Craig, but I did this in December of last year, and this was intended to hand off to Craig, because I felt like we needed to start talking about a cultural reset. And so I talked with Craig about it, and at that time, he wasn't very interested maybe moving forward with that. It's a lot of effort, a lot of work, and, and I know he had a lot of other things on his plate. So I kind of just put this, put this away and thought that maybe the next city manager or the next somebody, I would have this kind of ready to go for them and, and share it with them, and, because I spent a lot, a lot of hours going through that learning management system to find what I thought was just the right, just the right lesson to kind of communicate where I thought we needed to head. Of course, this could be reject, I mean, people could, you know, I've talked to the executive leadership team, and talking to you all, I think you should go through these and make sure that this is, these are things that, that you believe are appropriate and that you agree with, and if there needs to be some tweaking, I mean, this could maybe be a workshop for the council at some point. You could really get through all of these in about, I don't know, three hours. There really are 10-to-7 minute, five-to-10 minute lessons. So going back to that first slide, how are vision, mission, and values related to the journey? Well, in this case, look at Murfreesboro's roadmap. We want to become that learning organization. We want to be service-centric, receptive, speedy, easy, and safe, and focused on the council priorities. We want to get that culture of swing with the cadence, pull, and flow, and then we want values that emphasize conduct, communication, and company. So the last law that John Maxwell has is the law of legacy, and I've kind of written some things here, but I think that the motive should be about who can impact, who you can impact through your leadership. And the motive should be a desire to be a teacher and mentor, to pour time, effort, and energy into other leaders and future successors. And John Maxwell says, "You and I will be judged by how well the people we invested in carry it on after we are gone. Life isn't significant except for its impact on other lives. In the end, we will be judged according to the law of legacy." So that's it. Thank you for this opportunity. Really appreciate it. It's very humbling, and I'm available for-
Have a seat. Yeah, have a seat. Council members, we've got time to ask questions, so, and we're in a more informal setting, so ask whatever you would like.
Darren, I have a couple of questions for you. This may be a little repetitious for you on the presentation you made, but I just want to go a little deeper into some things. Give me an example of a project or an initiative that you have successfully managed.
Well, I brought, I brought this notebook, this is Effective Utility Management, in April of 2013. I had a workshop with the, with the Water Resources Board, and we went over something, you can take maybe that, that presentation and multiply it by about four or five, because I had several dealing with organizational approach, organizational structure, leadership and change management, governance, what governance really means, and of course, what measurement, predictive versus prescriptive type, type metric. So we started that in 2013, and we got the Utility of the Future designation in 2016 by the North American Clean Water Association, which was a big deal. 2018, the EPA actually used us as a case study. It's, I've got it published here, but we actually had a case study kind of demonstrating us as a best-in-class utility for implementing effective utility management. So a lot of things went into that, and our dashboard that we have at the end of every board agenda kind of shows you what we're measuring and how we kind of, again, we kind of created that culture within Water Resources to, hey, we need to start measuring things, we need to start trusting each other, we need to start taking those calculated risks so that we can perform at a higher level, and I believe we've succeeded. And again, that's kind of the mindset that I'd, I'd like to bring to, to the rest of the departments. Does that answer your question?
It does. Okay. How would you handle conflict or disagreements among your team? In other words, do you feel comfortable, or will you feel comfortable providing constructive feedback to a team member?
Yes. We, just last year in July, or August, we started an executive director team meeting where we, we, the executive directors and the police chief and fire chief, HR director, budget director, several of us started attending, and we were doing that without Craig's participation, because we, I really wanted us to be able to, if we, it seemed as though we had one department that may have started an initiative that adversely impacted another department, or the other department didn't even know that it was happening. So the, the point of this meeting was to get everybody together to start letting the right hand know what the left hand was doing. And there's a term in industry called sub-optimization. What we didn't want to have happen is somebody optimizing themselves at the detriment of a, of a fellow department. And if there was conflict, that we worked through that. We identified it, we compromised, and, and we took that compromised position to Craig, so that we'd already, Nissan did this back in the 80s, because all of the different departments started competing with each other almost, and I think it was Ben Affleck or Runyon, who was the president at the time, said, "You guys got to start meeting, work out your differences, come up with a solution and a compromise, and bring that to me. I'm tired of kind of playing judge, judge over here, or trying to determine what's best for the organization. You guys work it out and come to me and tell me what the best solution is." So that was kind of springboarding off that same concept. So I've said it a lot in those meetings, it's like, hey, it's okay, it's good to disagree. If, if we disagree, let's, let's do it professionally, and then let's work through, through how we mitigate this so that we all end up getting to a better place.
Because you've applied for the job, I'm sure you've done a lot of research, and over the years you have observed the various city managers we've had.
Yes.
Where do you see the city going? And I don't want to know where you see the city going, that typical question, five years from now, three years, 10 years, I don't want to know that. What I want to know is, where do you see the city going right now? I want the short-term city.
Okay. Well, the short, the short term is to get back to some of these basics and get, there are times to feels that there's a little bit of a freelance culture, and that was the point of those executive director meetings, try to get everybody on the same page. Getting, getting us to do the small things right, I mean, if you ask me what I would like to accomplish in the first 180 days, it would be those things, is really starting to run effective meetings, so that we save everybody a lot of time and a lot of energy by getting agendas together, everybody doing their homework before in the meeting. We know what the goal or the objective of the meeting is, and we can accomplish that quickly. It seems like we have a lot of times where we spend the first 30 minutes trying to figure out where we were at the last meeting, or somebody shows up late, or somebody doesn't show that you think is coming that needs to be there. So getting, getting that right and becoming a very transparent, collaborative organization is something that I think is a, is a, is a safe, short-term goal that I think everybody would agree with and everybody would embrace. Cities, we're supposed to be transparent, we're supposed to be highly communicative, we're supposed to collaborate, and I think that would be where I would want to get us to. And once you get that right, once you get that culture right, then you can, then you're, you're cooking with gas. You can strategize and get, get things, get those five and those 10-year plans, because everybody's ready. Everybody, you've primed the pump.
I got a question.
Oh, go ahead, if you're not through.
Is it about that, or you want me to continue with my question?
No, go ahead, that's fine.
I have just a couple more. You're going to be working with a team, and you're going to be, quote, if you get the job, leader of the team, okay? What is going to be your expectations of the people that are going to surround you? What are you expecting of them?
Well, that servant leadership model, I just think there's, that's a winner. When, when people believe that their leaders are working for them to support them, it gives them a confidence level and a trust. So I would, again, highly, high integrity, highly transparent, very communicative, serving the folks that, that are working as our direct report is something that I would expect. And there's another little twist, or situational leadership. I would expect managers and leaders to adapt more to the, to the management needs of the direct report versus a one-note management style and expecting everybody to conform to their management style. I think situational leadership is very important. You need to know the competency and the commitment of your employees, and you need to, you need to fold your management style to that competency and commitment level that they have.
And as a city council member, we give the city manager kind of our vision, you know, what we expect. So let's say a member of your leadership team does not agree with the council's vision nor your vision, how would you handle that?
Well, there would, there would be some, yeah, there'd be, there'd be some resetting, there'd be a reset for that particular individual. There'd be a very clearly defined where they have been, maybe not in alignment, and we would talk about how we would get them into alignment, and then they would, again, we've talked about personal improvement plans and training and making sure that they understood that I was setting clear expectations for them, and then we would monitor that and make sure that they got to that, got, was, got in alignment, or they would have to be, you know, put into a different position.
You know, our city is growing at an all-time high. We've been recognized nationally for the speedy growth we have. So in looking at our city, as you look at the demographics of Murfreesboro, what does our workforce look like regarding the city demographics? Would you work on that?
I will work with the council on that. I believe that would be something that the council would need to define as a priority, and again, setting those goals or those objectives that you all would like to see. I've worked with Randolph, you know, we just implemented a personal identifiable information blinding, so that people that apply into the city, all of their personal information is basically not seen by the reviewer of the application, so that there can be no, no bias. That is kind of maybe a, a initial step to ensure that there's no bias in hiring. I think, I've, I've struggled with this one, because when you talk about, you know, we have a male-female disparity in the Water Resources Department, and a large part of that is because we have laborers that work out in, in ditches and work out in trenches and work in live sewage and- and work out in trenches and work in live sewage and, and do heavy construction. And I don't think I'll ever be able to meet a female-to-male ratio that our, our, our community, that, that demographic ratio, because we just have a job that females do not apply for. We have trouble keeping laborers as it is. But, yeah, so I think we look at the applicant diversity pool, we look at our communities' pool, we look at the city, and we work with the, with the council, and we try to achieve some, some objectives you all define.
Last question. And I know everybody asks this question, but I want to take it to a different level. Why do you think that you are the best person for this job right now? And I, I want you to go into, I don't know you. And I, I want you to tell me about Darren. And why is Darren the best person for this job?
Well, I, I would say that I have always adhered to the biblical, you know, principles of, in order to, to lead, you have to be the servant. It gets back to, and, and that God opposes the humble, or promotes the humble and opposes the proud. And, and so, I just really want to care about people. I really want people to know that they are cared for, that their, their careers are cared for, their families are cared for, that, that, um, I want what's best for them. And so, if you had to say what makes me the best candidate, I just, I just really, I want to do what's right. And I want to do what's right for the community, for the employees, for the council, um, and just be, be that, just, just be that vessel or be that instrument that helps accomplish and elevate our, our service to the community.
Thank you, I don't have any more questions.
Bill? Thank you, Matt. Give me your question.
Been fortunate to have seen several people flesh out this role.
Yes, sir.
You've seen their strengths, and you've seen their weaknesses. I'd like for you to tell us, what is your weakness? As you approach the, how you flesh out this particular job, what is your weaknesses? And how are you going to address those weaknesses going forward?
Probably one of my, my biggest weaknesses is, is trying to, to, to please everyone and accommodate everyone. And I've learned as I've grown that that's, that's unachievable. At a certain point, you do have to, you hope to get a supermajority, I mean, it'd be great if you could get consensus, but it's, it would be great if you could even get a supermajority or two-thirds of people to agree. The way I would counteract that, the way that I, I hope that I have started that process, is to surround myself with very, very capable people and lean on them, um, and lean on the council. I mean, I think clear expectations from the council is huge in setting goals and objectives, so that that kind of gives us, hey, we're staying in our, we stay in these lanes, and we're trying to achieve this outcome. And then I need checks and balances through the people around me to say, Darren, you're, you're not, you're not, you're, you're deviating, or you're, you're going down a rabbit hole, or you're trying to appease somebody, that, one person that, that, uh, you're just, you can't do it and meet that, meet the overall objective. So, uh, the executive team, I've, I've told them I'm leaning on them a whole lot. Uh, they, they, they've got so much expertise and knowledge that I would, I would ask them to help me with. But I think the, the one thing I would also want to avoid is just the, I, I worked for city managers who were very unilateral in their decision-making. And that does create some focus, because you know exactly where you stand. But it, it really does, overall, it, it detaches people from the process. People don't feel comfortable approaching that leader, they don't feel comfortable maybe debating the approach or the path forward. And I would not want to do that. I think one of my strengths would be being approachable and, and being an active listener and trying to, to weigh all the options. Does that answer your question?
That's good. Uh, the, yeah, I think everybody's career kind of leads them to a certain place, and your career has led you to this place. It seems like everybody's previous career, whether it be an attorney or, or an engineer, has a certain perspective on leadership. And can bias and color their way of organizing and administering an organization. As an engineer, what are some of those challenges? It's not that you've fled another organization and, and with people as well, but how do you think you're going to address those biases and those challenges that your, that are up to this point have, I just can't realize, changed if you, if you're in this position?
Appreciate that question, uh, councilman. But I, I know that there are, and I, and I, I need to go back and research this, but there's about, there's four or five different communications. If, if I was here communicating, you know, some people are data-driven and want to hear the, the analytics, and then some people want to hear, hey, we're here to support each other and we're here to help you. There are certain, certain points, and I, and I, I practice and I work really hard at trying to, when I communicate, to hit certain aspects of a problem moving forward that, hey, we're going to use the data, but we're going to support each other, we're going to, to, to be, again, learners as we go through this. My wife and I have a comment we say to each other, says, "The person with the fewest blind spots wins." So, uh, my goal throughout my career has been to eliminate blind spots and to eliminate, bias, and to try to approach things. And I know y'all kind of make fun of me, I, I may get to, you know, I think Jim Stubblefield said, Darren, I asked you for the time, I didn't ask you how to make a watch. So, I understand that there may be a part of me that gets a little too granular, a little too whatever, but, so I, I, I would hope that people would feel comfortable talking to me if I am becoming too much of a one-note, or if I'm approaching things just too much in a monochromatic way, that they would say, hey, let's, 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 let's approach this differently, and that I would be open to it and, and eliminate any of those, those blind spots that I've got in, in, in my, my, you know, my 30-plus-year history and experience. Does that make sense?
The, the relationship between the city manager and the council is so important. I'd like for you to speak a little bit to the, how, what you see the challenges are, and, and what is your plan to kind of make that better, so that we have enough and proper information to be able to make decisions? Because I, I think, I'd like to hear you speak a little bit to that relationship, because quite honestly, there's always room for improvement.
Sure, sure, yeah. Uh, well, I, I did this when I first got to the water department, and I, I, I did an annual calendar of lunches. And I think I would like to do that with, if you just take seven times six, that's 42 weeks. I would like to have a Tuesday lunch, set on the schedule, and touch base with each of you six times a year, just, just to talk about what's on your mind, you know, just to, to, to go through. Uh, I just think it would be good to establish a relationship, understand each and, and learn each other better. Uh, I know we did that for about two years at the Water Resources Department, and then everybody kind of went, oh, okay, we're done. You know, we, 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 we know who you are and how you, how you, you know, manage things out there. But I think just, it's got to be communication. You guys have got to understand the drivers behind the decision, and, and I have to be able to give you that. One of the, the main things with EUM and what we've tried to drive home at, at, at Water is data-driven decisions. People may not agree with you all the time. I know Richard Baines and I clashed a lot on the stormwater fee and the stormwater enterprise, but he's finally got to the point where I kept showing him the data, he may not have liked the decision we made, but he, 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 uh, he knew that we were doing it in good faith and that we're doing it based on data. I think you all need to, to some degree, understand and me to be open to you, and it lets you see where staff is and why we are driving towards a certain decision. And you can tell us if you agree with that or not. I don't know how else to do it, other than to talk with you and, and just get, get time together where we can communicate with each other. I hope that makes sense.
The, to some degree, the council supervises city manager.
Absolutely.
What's, uh, what's style? And, and I think the one thing I heard when I talked to people that you ask for references and others, that there's two different styles of management. What kind of style of management do you respond to? And, uh, how do you see that? How do you see us fleshing that out?
Well, I, I like clearly defined expectations. I think as managers, you have to clearly define expectations, and I think we have a lot of, so, so if you take the culture that I just kind of went through on the vision of kind of, kind of setting that up as a learning org, once you get that culture right, then I think you can springboard into strategic planning, more strategic planning. I know we, we've talked about economic development, uh, strategic planning. We've talked about, um, maybe some other, uh, strategic planning on other, if we can set those five and 10-year goals and then measure them, I, I want to be able to show you that we are driving towards the goals and objectives that you all have defined. That has to, so proactive, I want to be proactive, be out in front of it, again, that reinventing moment, but I want everyone to agree to the goals and objectives that are set forward, moving forward. So, I don't have to guess, and staff doesn't have to guess if we're on the right track. We need to know that we're on the right track and that we're heading towards the objectives and goals that you all expect us to achieve. And if we don't meet those, then that's when my performance comes in, that's when, that's when you come and talk to me about performance. And so, it almost, when you, when you create those goals and objectives, you almost create a performance, uh, management plan for the, for the, for the city manager as well, because now I'm held accountable to these things. I want accountability, I want transparency, I want clearly defined objectives.
The challenge is there's seven opinions that we have to find consensus of, and you have to interpret seven opinions, and are you thinking of just getting four votes? Or are you thinking more strategically as to what's going on in the organization?
Well, I think doing the right thing and doing things the right way doesn't mean I, I try to count to four. I, I, I think what I do, and I've done this at Water, I go try to find best-in-class organizations, somebody that's done something really, really well. And then you try to emulate their success. So, if we wanted an economic development strategic plan, we need to go find somebody that's done that really, really well. Uh, we need to talk to the chamber and how we would coordinate with them, and how we would, how we would navigate through kind of confidentiality things that economic development folks want versus the transparency and, uh, mission that the city has. So, there's a lot of, you've got to find those that have done it well, and that's my job, is to go out and find those policies, those strategic plan, those, those procedures, and bring it to you all. And then we have those workshops, we sit down and you, you know, we create a, we create, we, we, we go through the research, right, that's the staff has provided, and maybe we come with you with, with recommendations, and then we come to consensus. Again, it's kind of like making the sausage, it's just, it's going to take a lot of time and effort, and a collaborative, a collaborative culture and a collaborative organization sounds great, it's a lot of work. And that's what staff's going to have to do. We're going to have to do a lot of work to be a collaborative, uh, partner with the council and, and get your buy-in on things. It's not easy. And I think we're ready. I, I, talking with the executive director team, they're ready to, they're ready to work.
My last question, and I'm going to ask both of you the same question. How do you perceive your place and opportunity within the organization if the other fellows chose us?
I think we talk. We talk through it, and we find out and make sure that we're on the same, same page and on the same, uh, you know. Sam hasn't seen my vision, and I haven't seen Sam's vision. I think our first order of business would be to sit down and talk to each other and make sure that transparency and collaboration and openness and, uh, accountability is, is some of the core values we would both embrace. That would be my approach. And then we can always, you know, we'll work through, we'll work through it.
Thank you. Austin?
Well, I've got 13 questions, but I was going to save them, but I'll, I'll throw some in here and try and get through as many of, as many of them as I can. So, I guess, first question. If you were hired as a city manager, what is the one major change that you would like to see happen in city government in the first year in the role?
Running effective meetings, I mean, be, be getting more efficient in how we, how we document our progress towards the goals and objectives that you all have defined, dashboards, the measurement, figuring out what we're measuring and what do we need to be measuring better and running effective meetings. That, that would be it.
Okay. So, efficient meetings with, I guess, metrics?
Yes.
Tell me about this, Darren. What's the biggest issue facing the city of Murfreesboro, in your opinion, and how would you address it?
Well, growth is always, the, the growth is the generic challenge, and there's a lot of offshoot challenges involved with that, right? I mean, there is, there's homelessness issue, there's the traffic, uh, there's the sewer infrastructure and cap, capacity. So, infrastructure keeping up for that growth, and then a lot of the, the social aspects of, of, that, that Murfreesboro sees coming together that we haven't had to experience before. And again, the mindset of getting the culture right to strategically react and be proactive to what we know's happening, getting ahead of it. That's the longer-term goal, is to get a proactive position so that we can, we're no longer reacting to these growth issues, but we are in a proactive position and we're, we're ready for them as they come, because they, we know they're coming. Is that, is that a, is that, it's a pretty generic answer, but I think growth and, and all the aspects of growth, getting ahead of it.
Okay. So, your, your resume's got a, a lot of accomplishments on here. What I want to ask you about is, I guess, tell me about that time where you failed in a previous role.
That's right.
You know, doesn't matter where, but you learned from it and you became a better leader and a manager as a result of that experience. Everybody talks about all their, their great things that they've done. Tell me about that time that's not on the resume, where you failed, but you learned from it.
That's a great question. Uh, I learned, well, we put a bridge a little too low over the railroad one time, that was not, that was, that was, I know that's not where you're headed, but that was a tough one. No, they're, they're, they're recently, well, I had, I, it is, it was, it was, it was a direct report to me, um, that, that honestly was a, a very challenging manager, and I, it took me way too long to, to correct that situation. I spent many years trying to coach, trying to train, I went through, would go through listening sessions with staff, I would try to create an improvement plan, I would, and it just didn't, it didn't catch. And it took, and it was many, 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 many years, and it finally was able to, to happen. And I would question my ability, and I questioned why I was having to go through this. But experience is not a fun thing. Most, most experience is, you don't want to really have to go through it again, because it, it teaches you a harsh, a harsh lesson. But that was probably my biggest failure as a manager, not being able to get this manager to, to manage well, and there being just a constant state of hostility and a constant state of, of, uh, just, just, just ineffectiveness in the, within the, within the division. So, I, I, I learned a lot from that, and I, I have become a better manager over it, honestly.
Okay. You, you talked previously, yes, about the, the biggest challenges, you know, facing the city. So, let's flip- So let's flip it around. What's the biggest opportunity facing the city and how do we address it? How would you address it?
Yeah, well, the biggest opportunity is, is the people and our ability to let them achieve full potential. I really think employee, employee, employee development is something that, I've kind of created special projects in the, in the, in the December. Between Thanksgiving and, and Christmas, I try to do a special project that typically deals with employee engagement. That's where that big matrix came up with, where I went through the learning management Getting, getting people into that swing, into that, into that cadence and getting everyone working together, going where they're headed. That, I think, is our biggest opportunity, is getting, getting our folks ready for this group, for the challenges.
Last question. What would you bring to this role that other candidates would not bring to this role? In other words, what is it that we get with a Darren Gore hire versus somebody else? What is Darren going to bring that's above and beyond better than somebody else?
You, you, you're going to get a learning organization, you're going to get, we're, we're going to create a different culture, we're going to get people working for each other, that servant leadership. We're, we're going to be a, a humble organization and we're going to, when, when we get that trust, when we build that mortar of trust between each other and everybody knows that everybody has each other's back, it's going to, it's, it's going to, it's like, it's just, it's rocket fuel. We'll be able to strategically plan better, we'll be able to tactically operate better, we're going to be, we're going to be cooking with gas.
Okay. No further questions.
That's good. Sean.
I just got a few and then...
Senator, I do not recollect.
I do not recollect.
Austin hit one, some, part of one of mine. I know hitting a SWOT analysis on an organization this big can't be done in an hour, can't be done, probably all day long, we could work on a SWOT analysis.
Right.
Austin kind of hit that, what's that one opportunity? So what's that one weakness and that one threat that you see with the city of Murfreesboro government?
Yeah, the, the, the opportunity, you can say it's the challenge and the opportunity's growth. I mean, the fact that we all have such a, so blessed with, with having businesses and people attracted to us is a huge opportunity. But it is the challenge of keeping the infrastructure in place, managing that growth, making sure our folks are trained and, and kind of trained up to be able to be as efficient, effective as possible. The threat is, 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 is not keeping up with that growth and, and letting things fall into a state of disrepair. Or having factions in the city and the personnel, you know, if, if we have, if we don't have certain departments that are bought into the, the vision or bought into where we're headed and start to try to derail that, that, that's a threat and that's something that would have to be dealt with. Does that kind of answer your question?
That kind of answers my question. All right, you, you've spoken the last couple of minutes about economic development. What do you kind of see is the, as you're ancillary looking in, what do you see is the best way to handle economic development? And where do you think our direction needs to be as far as economic development goes?
We, we need to have a plan for economic development. I don't think we have a plan right now. I think there's, what I've seen in the past, and again, not, not to disparage anybody, is we have put titles and people into positions and then just expected them to meet some undefined goals. I, I kind of said, it's like, we create a boat, put people on the boat, but we don't give them any sails and we don't give them a map of where they got to get to. So with economic development, that needs to be something that you all drive, the policies and what the goals and objectives and how you want to see that, that man, or that, the outcomes that you want to see. And then we need to, again, create the strategic roadmap on how do we get there, where are the milestones along the way, what's the timing, and what's success and what's not success? So if you, I, I believe we have to just create a, we have to create a strategic roadmap for that. And I just don't think we have it right now. And again, and how we interface with the, with the Chamber of Commerce is really, really big. And I've already talked about the fact that there's a little bit of a rub because economic development, a lot of folks don't like dealing with cities because of confidentiality agreements or confidentiality in their, in their speculative pursuits versus the city's kind of mission of being a transparent and, and public, public information available entity. So that has to, that would, that, that tension would have to get worked through as well.
My last question, though. There, there seems to be a past employee who worked for the city for a long time who has some tentacles in City Hall that, when you speak of a cultural reset, that could work towards a cultural reset. What is your plan on handling cutting off the head of that snake to make sure that, that those tentacles don't reach the City Hall anymore?
Okay. Just say this very diplomatically.
I tried to ask it, didn't I?
Yeah, I tried, yeah, 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 I tried. So, so there's almost, if you wanted to, if you wanted to talk about management styles, there's two different, there, there, you could almost take man, and, and I'm not going to, one is really not a management style, but I'm going to, I'm going to kind of give two, two opposing, two ends of the spectrum on management. One is unilateral decision-making, which typically is manipulation and typically is motivated by self-interest, right, or a self-serving agenda. On the other side, right, is a management that's data-driven, that's collaborative and transparent. And the motive should be protecting and advancing the public interest, no self-service. So when those two things come into, when you have two different, that's where I was talking about maybe the threat. If you see that style of management that is not inclusive or is not cohesive to the culture and the, the, the organization you're trying to create, you've got to note it, you've got to point it out, you've got to let your leadership understand that it's not acceptable, that's not cohesive to where we're headed and the people, and the culture we've set, and you can't let it influence you. You cannot let it be something that leads you, that influences you, or that even has the perception of leading or influencing you. Because that will deteriorate trust. People have a terrible tendency to go to the worst part of human nature, which is if they don't understand something or they think something's being done, they, you know, the old term, good old boy network, and there's just a few people making decisions and it's under kind of the, some cover of darkness, they, they just immediately assume it's bad and that it's self-serving. Even though it may not be, the perception is. And you, and we all have to live within that perception. So identifying it, telling folks it can't be an influence, it can't be perceived as an influence, because it will hurt the city's reputation. It will hurt the city's reputation and ultimately will hurt individuals' reputation if they're viewed that way, or allowing someone to, to influence them in a, in a self-serving way.
Great answer.
Great answer. Chairman, I hear you're bucking my tongue.
You're out of order, Jamie. The, the, the gentlewoman from the west end of Murfreesboro is now recognized.
All right. So I have a few questions that I've pre-prepared for both of our candidates, and then I have a couple of specific ones after your presentation. So first, if you become city manager, what would your ideal week look like? Generally, Mr. Gore, not literally every hour.
Well, I, 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 I've talked with Craig a little bit about, you know, the if I become the city manager. So I think initially it's going to be a, I think I used the word bevy. There's going to be a bevy of meetings going on every week because people are going to want to get to know me, they're going to want to see if I'm, what I speak is what I do, if I'm authentic. And I think I just have to have a lot of time in front of employees and, and getting people together. And again, start trying to message what, where, where we need to go the first, the first 180 days, first year. So it, it may not be, you know, what, you know, an ideal week would be me hanging out on the beach, right, at, at Florida. But, but as far as this, this new role goes, I, I, I'm going to probably spend the first six months to 12 months in meetings. I'm going to be talking to people and we're going to be getting, I'm going to be actively listening, we're going to, we're going to talk about, I need to be talking to you all, that includes you. It's just going to be hearing folks' goals and objectives and how can we start helping them?
Okay. If you had to give the current relationship between the city manager's office and the council a letter grade, what would it be?
Oh, gosh. That's a tough one. I, y'all seem to get along really, really well in public, so I don't want to give it a bad grade. And I don't want to talk poorly, you know, I don't want to be disparaging at all towards Craig. I, I know that Craig has been a little detached from the executive leadership team and it's been hard to kind of get him engaged in some areas. So, you know, I, I would, he can, you know, I guess I'd say this to him and he's going to hear it anyway, I'd probably give him a C-plus with staff. So I, I don't know if that has, is, is transferable to, to the council and his relationship. There's been times, it's just been really hard to, to, to get him to communicate with us. That's another reason why we started the executive director meetings, is to try to get that, get, get the upper leadership team starting to, to get, get, get motivated.
Servant leadership module, right, that you created, that you want to present to council and staff, what do you hope that that solves specifically?
I think, well, it solves the, the, the communication gaps. And I know communication is, it's, you know, we can say communicate, communicate, communicate. But it, it, it should start to create authentic relationships. I mean, that's what you want as your cornerstone, that everybody who you espouse to be is who you really are, that your actions and your words align, so you're an authentic person and that you, you develop authentic relationships. And once you, it doesn't mean everybody has to go out to lunch together and, you know, come over to their kid's birthday parties. It just means you need to trust the person who is, who they say they are. That develops trust. And when that trust is built and we start serving one another and we, we, we watch, we're taking care of each other's backs, we're watching each other's backs, that gives people confidence to start exploring how to do their jobs better and more efficiently. They're not worried or concerned about their, their supervisor abandoning. If they make one mistake, they don't worry about that supervisor abandoning. If it's a mistake made in good faith, hey, you made a mistake. It's move, let's, let's come back, regroup, try, try a different approach. So it's just trust and, and service to each other.
The, okay, so what you do in the city is incredibly important. I, I don't even understand half of what you say a lot of the times, but I look to you...
I'm sorry.
No, I mean, your, your knowledge, your, your knowledge of the, of water resources and of all of these great projects that you've been working on is invaluable. Do you feel like you are prepared to make decisions on things that have nothing to do with what you've spent your time in the city on the last few years? So specifically, you know, budget allocation, HR issues at a larger scale, not just within one department, but in a larger scale, issues with maybe civil rights matters or dealing with the library board, dealing with cultural changes in our community. Are you, do you feel prepared to handle those obstacles?
Not as a subject matter expert, but I, I feel, where I feel confident is what I, what the team has built at Water Resources. I don't know how to treat, I don't, I can't go out and operate the water plant. I can't go out and operate the water resource recovery facility. I can't go put in a new water line service or a new sewer line service. What I do know is who can do that. And, and, and I know what they need and when they come to me and tell me what they need, I know how to support those activities. So what I can do on all of those fronts you mentioned is, we will find the subject matter expert and I will support the approaches needed to get it done well. So I, I, I believe, I, I, again, keep harping on culture, but you create that trust, you know who the, I mean, you know, fire chief, police chief, I do not know public safety. You know, I, but I know how to support leaders who are the subject matter experts in public safety and getting them what they need to, to excel.
Good answer.
That's a good answer, yeah. I thought you could do all those things you said earlier. My last question is, you talked a lot about this cultural shift and the changes in, within the city hall that you want to see. And that really speaks to me, that's something that I'm very passionate about in my organization. I'm sure you know as well as I do that buy-in is really, really difficult. How do you expect, how do you plan on getting buy-in from staff?
Randolph asked me that last Wednesday. You, you, you have to truly, truly care about people. If people do not think that you care about their well-being, their careers, their families, their, their lives, they will not react to change. They're going to just think you're doing it for, again, a self-serving, Darren's just trying to create a new culture so that he can look good in front of the council or he can look good in front of the public. You have to really genuinely let them know that you care about them. And again, that's just a heart for service. You got to have a heart for it. If you don't have a heart for it, you'll get nominal success and you'll get nominal improvement. But it, like you said, you won't, you won't achieve that excellent status that you're trying to, trying to, to achieve. So you just have to really let everybody know you care about them. And that means spending time with them and listening to them.
Does that deserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal?
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Gore?
Yes, sir.
Talked about servant leadership.
Yes, sir.
Do you think you're providing servant leadership right now at Water and Sewer? You're the face of Water and Sewer. Everything that comes through Water and Sewer comes through you. Are you providing that right now?
I believe so. I, I would hope that if you asked by, you know, Valerie, Doug, Matt, Donald, Alan and John, that they, that they have bought into that EUM model, which is again, that servant leadership. I hope that I'm doing, I would hope they would say yes.
Okay. What's your, if you're chosen to be city manager, do you have a succession plan for Water and Sewer?
I, I, I do. That's going to be, I, I don't, I haven't talked to anyone yet because I wanted to get through this process first and I don't know if it would be a little premature to, to discuss it with you all. But I do, I do have, and I can discuss that with you if, if I'm successfully chosen, I can, I can meet with y'all one-on-one and talk through that. But yes, I've got a, I've got a plan.
Okay. I got two more, so they're basic. So what is your economic development plan for the city?
It's...
How would you like to see the city grow as far as economic development?
I, I have been involved with economic development since I got with the city in '05 by building infrastructure. Even before that with Wiser Company, you know, I was one of the lead designers on all medical center Parkway, the whole Gateway area. And we got that, the, the reason that, that area took off so well is because we were ready, right? We prepared kind of the foundation, the water, sewer, road networks, everything to, to support economic development. So I, one of my main missions at Water Resources is don't interfere with economic development in the city. Always get ahead of it with the infrastructure. So part of my strategy would be, what we've always tried to do is to be in that proactive position to prepare for it. As far as, you know, I know one of the, you know, improve economic development is one of the council priorities. And I've thought about that the last week or so and I really, I, I, I would like to embellish that or understand that a little bit more because we, if you talk to engineering and water resources and utilities, we, it's hard for us to keep up right now with, with the economic development that we've got. right now with, with the economic development that we've got. So, how do we, do we, do we really want to aggressively accelerate that even more? Or do we want to slow that down? Or does improve economic development have a, is there a specific quality of job or industry, or, I know we did a lot of work on the infield boundary and business generating properties and those kind of things. I think we have some good foundational elements to, again, create that, that strategy. So, I guess my approach would be, keep, keep the infrastructure supporting it, and then try, let's create a five-year economic development plan and really target some things that you all want to see, and then let's work towards those, those goals. So, my economic development plan or strategy is what your economic development strategy would be, but I would help facilitate it.
All right, so the last one, Chairman. We, as our city continues to grow, we have a very diverse community, and I think our workforce should be just like that with the city. A lot of times, we don't think about diversity because it's out of sight, out of mind. We don't congregate with people that look like us, or different people that look like us. Sometimes, we don't happen to think about diversity. So, as you have been the head of Water and Sewer, and as you, if you become city manager, what are you going to do about diversity? We can talk about and say, well, we're going to put these pinpoints out here, but if you don't surround yourself with somebody different and have a different perspective, you don't know the other person's thought or how they're thinking, because it's good to have different people in the room, and it's good to have a different insight. So, what, tell me what you would do.
Well, I would, we don't have, and I understand you saying we don't have those pins placed out there right now, so I don't, again, going back to, I would like to have clear directives and objective goals and measurable goals. I know back in July, you know, when we did the PII blinding, and when, did we just initiate that PII blinding this January, was it the beginning of this year?
Correct.
So, I had asked some of those questions about, let's start looking at what our demographic diversity, let's look at the water department, let's look at the various departments and see how we measure up, and then let's look at our applicant pool and make sure that our applicants are coming in, the applicants that we can choose from are representative of our community. And I think when we start generating some data, and I just haven't, I haven't spent any time on generating that data and starting to lock into that, but I would like to, and start looking at other cities and looking at how they approach it again, and then, again, at the end of the day, you all need to really, if that's a priority, we need to, we need to define it as a priority and then set some measurable goals. But I understand what you're saying and agree, and, again, taking that data-driven approach. I don't know exactly where we are right now on where we sit with regards to our, our community's diversity compared to the city's, but I agree, we want to emulate the diversity of our community as best we can.
Thank you.
All right. Darren, I've just got three more. Breakfast, by saying, not a lot of people in the community understand that a lot of the day-to-day operational decisions that are made are not made by the city council. So, we get a lot of blame for things that we don't really take part in, and I think it's important in the relationship that the city manager has with the city council, because however you or whoever is in this position goes, that's really how the council goes. So, I worked with one city manager, and going back to something Bill asked, the question is what happens if the council disagrees, or if you disagree with a council member? I worked with one city manager that would say, you get your four votes, and I'm going to work on getting my four votes. And then I worked with another city manager that really wouldn't, just sort of shook his, shook their head, and you really never knew. So, what happens if you are determined in a direction that you want to go, but maybe you have a couple of council members that don't agree with that direction, but the majority of the council does? How do you handle that?
Delicately. I think that if I am moving in a direction, I would want, again, to show you the data, to, everybody wants, when you make a decision, everybody wants to know why. I would want the decision to be based on data, based on good practices, based on best practices, based on a model, best-in-class city, what they've done. And if I believed it was the right thing to do, I would, I would tell you, and I would, I would hold firm to that, to that belief, but if two didn't, then I would, I would hope that they would also be able to share with me why they had the opposing view, and hopefully, I'm malleable enough or I'm flexible enough that if what, what they provided me and changed, could change my mind. But I think counting to four, that's not something that I personally want to try to go towards. I don't, I'm not trying to convince, I want to present the data in a dispassionate, objective way, and let you all make the decision, and not, not, maybe, maybe there's a little bit of passion involved with my position, but I would hope that it would be dispassionate, objective, data-driven, and then when you all made the decision, it's unity of command, that's what we do, and there's no, there's no hard feelings. So, I would just try to, I think I would just approach it from a data-driven perspective and hope that the data, the data drove the decision. Does that sound okay?
Good question, or good answer. What are your personal organizational skills that would make you a successful city manager, and how would you expect your team to mirror those roles?
Well, again, very organized. I'm, my, my computer organizational skills, my paperless, let's say, filing system, I think, is very good. I document a lot of things. I carry this around with me everywhere. I take notes, I try to follow up very important meetings with the notes I took, with follow-up, you know, to basically record that we had the meeting and what decisions were made. I really do expect everyone to, to start adopting that, that mode of taking notes, following up, and, and, again, defining where we left off a particular progress meeting. I would hope that everyone, again, would be organized in their filing and how their offices, and maintain good workspace, and file thing, I've had people, you know, in the past where they were just filing everything on their hard drive, on their personal computers, like, no, that goes on the server, that's where everybody can have access to it. You know, you always have to play the hit-by-the-bus scenario, if somebody gets, I don't make it home today, you know, who, you know, I need everyone to have access to everything I've done. So, I think, I think good housekeeping practices and good organizational skills from the standpoint of taking notes and keeping good, good records.
Okay. Last question. I think this is going to be the most, I'm asking the same question for both of the candidates. There are some extreme positives for having internal candidates, and there are some negatives. And here's, I think, the largest negative. How do you handle divesting yourself from the current role that you're in right now? And I give you this example. As city manager, you're not involved in planning.
Right.
A developer calls you, and they're mad of the decision that the planning director has made. Or in your, in your prior world, someone calls you, and they're mad with the decision that the Water and Sewer Director has made.
Right.
How do you handle that?
Well, there's always two sides to the story, and the way I handle it now, because I don't, I don't, I don't do the day-to-day setting connection fees, approving plans, telling folks they got to get their service from one, this street or that street, and it may have cost implications. So, they call me and want to know, and are upset, and I say, give me, give me just a few minutes, let me talk to the, let me talk to whomever is involved, and I will go talk to them, and I'll say, hey, this is the situation, what's going on? Are you guys, is everything? I get the other side of the story, call them back, and say, look, this is something we have no flexibility on, or this is something that, yeah, we may have some flexibility, and I've asked staff to readdress it. I don't want to undermine staff. Staff has a role to play in approving plans and following a process so that there's uniformity. But what I have learned is sometimes staff doesn't feel empowered to be flexible in certain instances when they probably should feel flexible. So, I think, again, those are such nuanced scenarios, I want staff to understand we trust them, and maybe to think a little outside the box before just saying no, but also, if there's just, if it's a policy, and it's a, it's a, it's pretty much a cut-and-dry issue, you got to support them, and let them, let the, let the person, the angry party on the other side of the phone, that, look, there's no movement here, we got, you got to, you got to, you got to follow the process. So, divesting myself, I don't, people are going to call, and they're going to want me to get involved, and all I can say is, I try, I leave it up to staff, and I support staff, but if I can see a creative solution, I could maybe prompt staff to look at that creative solution.
Darren, thank you so much.
I have one more, one more question. Came to mind in listening to the questions. Darren?
Yes, ma'am.
Since I've been on the council, I've seen a lot of companies, the same companies get the jobs. You know, I don't know if it's a process we go through to where they bid or not, but if you become city manager, would you be willing to work on minority businesses getting contracts in our community? Because it's a small number as far as percentage, but I just never see, I don't see, and I don't know who does all this work around the city, I just don't, but I don't see any minority businesses doing anything for the city. I don't know if it's, they apply, and they just don't get it, or they don't apply, but with a city with the demographics like we have, and, you know, we all taxpayers and everything, would you work on seeing that some minority businesses get some of these contracts?
Well, that would be, that would be something that I would work with council on, for sure. That would have to be something, and I have to work with legal. I know that there are communities that have those, they maybe even start grading bids based on minority ownership. That is something that I don't think we have right now in our current bidding and purchasing scheme, but absolutely be happy to talk and start to, be a great retreat, be a great retreat to review and talk about with council.
And promoting local businesses too, you know.
Darren, have you been able to see your, the results of this, your executive team? Okay, we'll give you a copy of that after, after this.
Yes, one more question. I just want to get this on the table for consideration with both of these candidates. You know, we've seen lots of city managers flesh out communication with the city council in different ways. We've had weekly update reports, our city, you know, city schools director sends out an update on Friday. One thing that we could, there's, and I know that's a lot of work to some degree, and I don't want to spend all your time, you know, typing out a report every time, but there's got to be some regular communication. I don't want to find out things on WGNS or Daily News Journal. And I think that's difficult for us when, obviously, what do you think about this? Well, I didn't know anything about it until I have to go back to WGNS or Daily News Journal and find out about it. So, somehow, this long vision of what's in the works, or what are going to be decision items for council in the future, I'd like to have a little bit more awareness of that, and how that happens, I don't know. What's the best tool for that? And it doesn't encumber too big a brick on your load to do it on the city manager's role, but we need to be updated as to what is out there and what decisions are in front of us, potentially in front of us, so anyway, address that.
Well, it's going to take focus, and it's going to take diligence, and I do think that, if you asked me about a weakness earlier, I may be, I may over-communicate. You may end up saying, Darren, stop, because I'm putting too much, or, hey, that stuff shouldn't have been put out in a memo. A man may be telling me, hey, you can't be writing that stuff in the council memo. But, but again, I'm going to, I understand what you're saying, I hear you, and it's not that there won't be slip-ups, but there will not be a chronic problem there. You will be updated on everything. As soon as I know it, I'm peeling it to you all.
Darren, thank you, appreciate answering that, all of the questions.
That's great. I appreciate the, I appreciate the questions, good stuff.
So, we are going to take a five-minute recess, we'll get everything reset for our next candidate to come in, and then we'll start over again. All right, we're going to move to our, our second candidate. Sam, the floor is yours, and then you'll give your presentation, and then I think everyone has some questions they'd like to ask.
Would you like me to repeat all 208 units that you completed at college?
Well, I always thought I wanted to be a professional student, so maybe that wasn't too bad. Well, good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, present my qualifications for the city manager position for the city of Murfreesboro. Humbled and honored to be here today as I stand before you, and I'm asking for your affirmative vote. Something that I think we learn from elections, when you're campaigning, ask them to vote for you. I'm asking for your vote today, affirmative vote, that is. When you guys consider and deliberate all the information, I think that you'll agree that I'm qualified and ready to take on this position. You know, I was also pleased to learn that, that we are doing an internal recruitment. We wouldn't have done that a few years ago, and so I think that has something to say about where our staff has come and the confidence that you all have in, in our current leadership and our current staff, so I thank you for that. Information to present, you know, it's like studying for a final exam for the past 25 years, maybe even a little bit before that, even all the way back to Pickett County High. You know, I remembered something that I learned in interviewing some other internal candidates, and that is, we don't wear a resume around. You know, you work with people perhaps for years, and you see them in their, in their normal work roles, but when I've sat in interviews for internal candidates and had a chance to see their qualifications and understand their background, I actually got to learn and know more about them than I did before. And I think the same thing probably applies here. You know, we've worked together, as I rehearsed my time with the city, I think Mayor was, was on Planning Commission very early in my career, and Vice Mayor Shacklet was on and off of the council during that time, and so certainly, they would have some more of my lived and worked experience, but some of us, we haven't had as much time, and so I think I look forward to the opportunity to talk to you about those qualifications today. I'm not one to boast or brag about myself, but I also know it's a poor dog that won't wag his own tail, so just bear with me a little bit as we rehearse some of this, and I wag my tail just a little bit. In PowerPoint, I'm going to start out, current position, work my way back, and then just following a little bit of rehearsal of my qualifications, experience, education. We'll change gears, and I want to cover a few things in the PowerPoint, city issues, city matters, vision statement, and just share some of that with you before, before we stop and take time for questions. So, currently, I'm the Assistant City Manager. I assumed that role in January of '23, and currently, I'm still employed there, and you can contact my current employer. I think you'll find, find that all good. Just some highlights from that time, you know, we continue to work on Town Creek and the pedestrian bridge, the Broad Street, the Bottom Street development, which was some of our vision statement, you know, from the studies we completed in the 2016 timeframe. We were able to put together a really nice deal for the Kason Lane pre-K for Murfreesboro City Schools by knowing that that property was available, and then identifying some sources of funding to help that come together. Now, that serves 150... Now that serves 150 pre-K students. But the other thing it did for the city and for city schools is actually opened up a few classrooms on the east side of the interstate. And so I thought that was a big win for us and for city schools when we were able to complete that. You know, continue to work on Veterans Park. I continue to coordinate with Middle Tennessee Electric and their 840 property. In fact, I'm, I had to skip a meeting that they had scheduled today with some review on that property to be here. And I'm glad to be here, but also unfortunately, I missed that meeting with TVA and some of the other economic development partners there. You know, I've served as primary contact for economic development for some time. Also serve as the city's representative on the county industrial development board's Economic Development Committee. That's a lot of words to say that this committee is required by statute to review economic development opportunities and issues from time to time in our community. Also, the downtown planning and wayfinding studies, those were two separate studies that we, that we kicked off to specifically look into the downtown area. The planning study really focusing on how we activate the next, the unused space in the downtown. And then the wayfinding study to help us with our branding and wayfinding in the downtown community. Before that, in July of '18, then I was promoted to executive director of development services. The very significant thing there was that was just after Mr. Kendall's appointment as city manager. And we reorganized city government into a model that we use today with executive directors and divisions and leadership team. I think that's a very comfortable leadership model for us today, and I think it's working very well. We continue to learn and grow in that. But it, but it has been a, a good business model for us, or a good leadership model for us. And I served in that till January of '23. And, you know, got to thinking, what happened to that five-year gap in time? And there was a pretty big chunk of our time that all of us spent with COVID and the COVID leadership team. And so very early in that process, I had the opportunity to be a part of city staff and then working with our stakeholders in our community and how we were staffing things, how we were doing things, how we kept what the governor declared at that time to be essential services, how we kept supporting those essential services. One of the interesting things was that construction and development was considered to be an essential service. So on the fly, we had to come up with a way to issue permits, conduct inspections, continue plans review, take items to the planning commission. I did find it interesting in that time that our accessory structures permits, that would have been for pools and decks and expansions of houses, remodels and things like that, tripled in that timeframe. And so it became a very busy time for our staff to continue accommodate that. Had a chance to be on the recruitment of Educational Media Foundation, which is the parent company of K-Love Radio. Unfortunately, we finished second in that recruiting, learned a lot about our community in doing that. And we finished second to Williamson County. They have now relocated and established a presence in Williamson County and in Franklin. Also, had a chance to be part of the Notes Live team. I was actually the first contact when a real estate agent who was looking at Murfreesboro as a potential location sought me out, contacted me, and that was our first contact. And so we were able to go from that initial contact to where we're at today. Also had the chance to join with others on the TSSA team to work through the recruitment and plans for the Seagull, Richard Seagull Soccer Park and setting up that soccer program we have there, which is, I think, outperforming our expectations from, from some of the original work. Continue then in that executive director's role in primary economic development and also for the city's rep on, on the committees there. While also being the executive director, I served for a period of time as a community development director. In that period, we had about $6 million in community development, emergency solution grants, and COVID funding over that timeframe. We also added a home program that HUD started with us, which is targeting affordable housing. And that funding currently sits at about $500,000 per year. We're really just stretching our, our wings on that and finding out how to get that, that money to the ground and help in affordable housing. Our current plan is to assist the Murfreesboro Housing Authority with the next round of their work. And we'll be partnering with them and adding some money into the program that they'll be doing over, over in the Mercury Park area. In that time, we transitioned our senior staff. John Callow retired after having served for 13 years. Patty Pope, who served probably close to 30 years, a few months later had a health issue and decided to retire. And so we, we had to completely restructure that community development team. In the middle of that, we had a HUD audit. They were looking under our bed, looking in our junk drawer, trying to find out, you know, how we do business. We added a community development consultant to help give us some guidance and also to make sure that, that our program stayed compliant with, with the federal regulations. And we've now built a new community development team with Robert Holtz and his group, and they're doing a bang-up job there. Also served as floodplain administrator in that period from July of 2015 to July of '23. And in that, you take on becoming the lead floodplain member, lead staff member. The floodplain administrator is the technical position, but I would be the primary contact on floodplain issues and responsible for the implementation of that program at the city level. In that time, we targeted several flood studies and continue to do that, to update our, our information on flood studies. We included water quality studies to assist with that. FEMA also conducted an audit, again, looking under our bed and in our junk drawers and trying to find out, you know, about the implementation of our program. So we worked through that with them. We worked through new flood map updates and worked with FEMA to get those advertised and adopted and out to our stakeholders and let that become the new, best available information for flood protection. And then was also the primary contact for the floodplain management arm of FEMA and FEMA as that federal and state program trickles down into local government at the city level. I served as assistant city engineer for three years in the period from June of '15 to June of '18. There, probably the, the primary accomplishment that I remember about that timeframe was the adoption of the current major transportation plan. And then working through that, Dana Richardson had retired, Joseph Haidlot had retired. I was one of the few guys that had been around for some of the previous versions of the major thoroughfare plan update. And so I served as the lead engineering development services engineer on that program. Spoke at stakeholder groups. I represented the plan at community and neighborhood meetings. I met one-on-one with people who had concerns or interest in that project. And then also represented it before the planning commission and then ultimately before the mayor and council. And then that's the plan that we are pursuing today. Mr. Griffith and I shared engineering responsibilities for the city. His focus primarily on public works and road and drainage infrastructure. And my focus was really in the areas of development services, planning and engineering, land use and zoning, annexation studies. And so we, we had that comfortable split in our duties. And I served in that role for, for the three years, working side by side with the planning director, the building codes director, and city administration on a variety of projects and issues. Continued to serve as, as the lead city staff member for floodplain and drainage issues. My blood was pumping a little bit the past day and then into yesterday as we monitored what was going on in our community. And of course, we have staff, more staff now, and they were able to get out and take care of some of the things that, that I would normally want to do and, while I continued to be in the office and meetings yesterday. Served as the city's, as the engineering department's lead, represented before the planning commission. Attended probably 90 to 100 meetings in that time period, attending every planning commission meeting, special called or routine was doing that. And then continued to serve as environmental projects lead, which we'll cover a little bit in the, in the next slide. And so the start of my career actually was last century. That makes me feel really old, but it's also, you know, a time that, that I had the opportunity to come to the city of Murfreesboro. And I think back about that time, mayor, there were still advertisements in the local paper. And so as I was accustomed to do on Sundays, I'd sit down after, in the afternoons and, and get the classified ads from the Tennessee and, and the Daily News Journal. And those were where advertisements for city, for engineering services would be. So the recruitment's in there, hey, we're looking for an engineering consultant. And so part of my business development was to, was to track those. But I also watched the engineering market. And on that one Sunday afternoon, there was an advertisement in there for the city of Murfreesboro. And I told my wife, I said, it looks like they took my qualifications and put them in this job. Said, I'm gonna apply for this job. And ultimately wound up being hired and coming here in November of '99. What was interesting about that is, is just a couple of years later, was a, was a pretty big fork in the road for, for me at the city. You know, I came to work on environmental projects to help with the new stormwater program that was being required at the federal and state level. And in probably 2001 or so, another engineer who most of you would know was Jay Bradley, decided to leave employment with the city of Murfreesboro. And the city engineer at the time, Ken Hayes, came to him and said, hey, Sam. Said, I know you didn't sign up for this, but I really need you to take on this new role for the city. And I really need you to, and he said, you've already been learning it, you've already been understanding it. You're doing very well in, in, in the city development process, but I need you to take that on and be the lead for us. I need to build roads, I need to work on funding, I need to be doing these other things, I need you to take that role. So it was a, you know, it was a shift in what I was doing and really a shift in, in the outcome of my career. As we, as we worked on the stormwater program, continuing on with that, the, there was a decision made to, to move that to the water and sewer department. And that was for funding, that was for collection of the fee, that was for administration of the permit requirements, and overall program management. And had I stayed with that, ironically, I may have been in the water and sewer department today rather than in the city manager's office. So I did find that a bit ironic as we think about that. But that new position allowed me to see and learn and grow how the city makes sausage. I got to learn a lot about other departments. I got to learn the city way of government. I was able to participate in meetings and discussions and considerations that for my time with the city was probably too soon for me. But the city also needed me at that point to be available for that, and I didn't hesitate to call to move into that. So just gonna run through a few things here. This covers, you know, a 16-year period, so it's, it's a little extensive. I'll, I'll move as quickly as I need to here. Served as the on-call emergency response lead. You know, kept your phone with you, middle of the day, nights, weekends, holidays, just being available for that. Responded to the Sledgecraft Sawdust Silo Fire that went on for about seven days until we could come up with a plan to get that worked through. Continued to serve as, or started serving as a city's lead in stormwater and drainage. And while the program elements did move to the water and sewer department, I didn't take a backseat on stormwater. Helped in development, developing the body of regulations and policy and practice that we continue to use today. The same thing as we updated our city development rules and regulations and policies, adopting the gateways, updating our subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances as, as we need to do from time to time. I watched the gateway concept be hatched in the early 2000s, understood the mayor and council's vision at that time, understood the city administration's vision at that time, and then was able to help start implementing that vision as we had the opportunity to see the gateway area, the medical center parkway, parkway area become what it is today. We, we were in numerous project development agreements where we're public-private partnership. You know, I didn't craft those at that time, but, but was asked to help administer those, working with the development community and the private side in the implementation and execution of those. And so I learned a lot about project development agreements, how they're structured, why they're structured the way they are, what the benefit is to the city of Murfreesboro. Why would we ever want to enter into one? And all of those things that, that gives, that give me a good understanding today of, of our opportunities in project development agreements for infrastructure and, and development. The 2009 tornado, boots on the ground that day at launch, we just turned in and started working. But the, the work didn't stop with just that initial response. It really continued for several months after that. And the, the, the event was declared a federal disaster. And with that came FEMA grant funding to help reimburse the county's costs for doing, or the city and the county's costs for our response in that event. And so I had to dig in with the FEMA representatives and, and our city team to justify our funding, to, to show FEMA why we should be reimbursed for the items that they didn't want to reimburse us for, and with the goal there of maximizing FEMA's grant back to us to help reimburse the city for our response costs. Turned out to be a 75% grant from FEMA that helped cover a lot of our infrastructure and, and public facilities and debris removal and overtime costs for our city staff. That was quite extensive. And had a chance to be in the, in the emergency operations center, you know, that Friday evening, and then continuing with that for the several days while we kept the EOC activated and helping coordinate the logistics of that city's response. Then again, in May of 2010, just a, just a, less than a year later, when Middle Tennessee was hit with extensive flooding. Murfreesboro's flooding was not widely reported, but it was very significant. And even that Saturday morning, I was out responding to issues out in the city as the events of that, that weekend and that Monday and Tuesday continued to develop. And so followed that on Saturday and Sunday and Sunday night, and then Monday and Tuesday as we activate our EOC and continue to respond to that. And if you'll recall, the Shores Road area, which was at that time just fresh, freshly added to the city, the road remained closed out there for months as that, as the floodwaters just were persistent. And so we were able to, to develop a response and a plan out there to help, help restore normal activities in that community. And again, working with FEMA, this turned out to be a 90% grant from FEMA. And we justified our response cost and, and helped with rehabilitation and correction of our infrastructure that was damaged and other losses that we had. The Sons of Confederate Veterans planned a rally in the downtown. I had the opportunity to be on the pre-planning group with that, working with the police chief, the fire chief, city administration, parks and rec, public works, engineering, and, and developing a game plan for that. And, and then on the day of the event, was actually in the EOC with other city leadership, city manager, fire chief, police chief. And we coordinated activities from there as that rally went on and then on the, on the backside as it broke up and dismissed. Again, other flood and storm response, I won't jump on those too much, as I think probably already covered those. Town Creek, Culvert collapse, you know, with, that's, that really is the first action we had on, on what we're doing today, actually started in 2007 with a, with a collapse, a failure in a pipe system under the drive-through at KFC. And that led us to examine that whole system and come up with a plan that we thought would be better than just replacing the pipes. And then again, on a Friday afternoon, during an afternoon thunderstorm, a, a building in the downtown area suffered significant damage. It was an older building. The roof gave loose as, as a thunderstorm just, just had direct downwinds on it. That roof was critical to the structural support of the building. And so we wrestled with that building all through the night and the utilities and the hazard it was to the, to the public health. And about 5:30 that next Saturday morning, we were able to get that building on the ground and stabilize it and get the utilities, gas and electric and water cut off to that building so, so it wouldn't be a hazard to the, to the public or the public street anymore. These are estimates, yeah, I didn't know I can count every one. But during my time in development services, I reviewed over 300 subdivision plans, over 1,800 site plans, over 450, or 450 final plats. And, and that resulted in the creation of over 36,000 residential units. My mind thinks in terms of the city of Murfreesboro. My mind thinks in terms of the city of Murfreesboro, of the plans I've reviewed and the projects I've worked on. And when somebody asks about an address or a location, my mind is going through that card catalog and, and zeroing in on a experience or an activity or a response or a project that we did in that area. Couple of the environmental projects, the Rosebank dump closure, you know, that started in, before my time with the city, and it was ongoing when I came on, and we continue to try to get the Rosebank dump, dump wrapped up with the state of Tennessee. The old city landfill closure, also had initiated with the state before my time here, but I became the lead engineer on that and worked with, through the engineering department, the funding process to get the landfill stabilized and closed. You may or may not recall that we had a landfill gas issue in the 2009 timeframe, and we were able to get that controlled. And for a little bit of point of reference, it was right beside of the significant investment that was going on on the city-owned gateway properties, the Fountains, MMC, St. Thomas, Rutherford. So we implemented a temporary control system and then ultimately a permanent control system to, to help with that landfill gas management. I mentioned that the view that you get from development services, from planning and engineering, allows you to see so many things in the city. And in that time, I had a chance to work with our parks department, with the Murfreesboro Airport, with our city school system, with Murfreesboro Fire Department on their needs and their activities. We were the engineering department for the whole city. And so, we served as a technical rep to address issues and address projects and growth and development, continued to help and assist in the areas of drainage and roadway infrastructure improvements and planning and executing those when, when my, my help was needed. And I'll quickly run through these. We did the Spring Branch Water Quality Project, Garrison Creek Water Quality Project. We put in, I think the number is 650,000 square feet of permeable pavers on a few city projects to, to demonstrate permeable pavers as a stormwater management program. I became the, the lead engineer for bonds and letters of credit and surety. The banks in town saw my work, knew my name. That became really important to us in the downturn in the 2008, '09, and '10 timeframe. 2007 was a water, high watermark for the city as far as residential growth and development. And then with the downturn in 2008, you know, we had some projects that didn't make it, we had some properties that didn't make it. And so, working with the banks and the developer and our legal team and our engineering department, we were able to make a call on those obligations, work out agreements to get projects back on track, and compared to some of our peers, we suffered very little loss through that. There were a few projects that, where the city has, has picked up to help out and, and get those to, to city standards, but, but we had suffered very little loss in that, in that recession as, as we worked through those bonds and sureties and, and development obligations. Had the opportunity to do building permit reviews, so I got to see firsthand how the building department did their work, and we coordinated together in the development services. Participated in plans review with them, the building permit applications, and then also the certificates of occupancies for many of the commercial buildings as they were approaching their time to, to occupy. And then just a little bit of time in my private practice. For 11 years before coming to Murfreesboro, worked in environmental engineering consulting for two different firms in the Nashville area. Some of the clients I worked for was Metro Public Works, helped them on solid waste and landfill issues and landfill gas, worked for Metro Water, helped them on several projects, including the 8th Avenue Reservoir Cover and Chlorination System. Had, had a, had a long career with the Murfreesboro, Murfreesboro, sorry, the Metro Airport there with stormwater management and environmental issues, closing some old disposal sites and those sorts of things, some of the things that, that were in my future at the city of Murfreesboro. Also did, did work nationwide for the Corps of Engineers and for the Atlantic Division and Southern Division of the Navy. Private clients included Alcoa at multiple locations, Owens Corning at multiple locations, Porter Cable in Jackson, Tennessee, TDOT and the Tennessee Air National Guard here, here locally. Was registered as a professional engineer by the state of Tennessee in '92. Maintained my EPSC Level 1 and Level 2 certifications at the state. During my time with the city, I was asked to serve on an advisory board at Tennessee Tech for their Water Resources Center, and also for their professional studies, master's program as they were getting that off the ground and, and targeting working professionals to, to get advanced degrees. I served as the, in the officer's rotation, the board rotation and committee rotation for the ASCE, the American Society of Civil Engineers, Nashville District and Tennessee Section, and served as Secretary Treasurer, Vice President, and then President in 1999, just before coming to the city. Was recognized in 2005 as the Government Engineer of the Year for the Nashville branch. And in 1999, when I had hair and it had color in it, and I was 20 pounds lighter, I was recognized as the Young Engineer of the Year there in the Nashville market as well. Some of my civic involvement, my wife and I are member, members at Franklin Road Baptist Church, and we have been for about 20 years now. And also served at an Oldsboro Road Baptist and Grace Baptist Church, Sunday School teacher, youth ministries, kids ministries, taught just about everything you can teach in the, in the kids' section. I served as a deacon, as a trustee, as a youth sports coach. And this afternoon at 5:30, I'll join the Coach Pitch baseball team that I'm coaching with my grandson. Let me hit a drink real quick, sorry about that. This is a water powered windmill, and I gotta keep it wet. Also served the North Rutherford Soccer League as coach on the board of direction there, and also as a coaching coordinator for youth divisions while I was there. And Jamie, I actually served for eight years as a volunteer fireman for the Picket County Volunteer Fire Department, which might have been the smallest department in the state, but also created a love for the fire service that I continue to have today. And I did complete 208 college credits, I guess, at Tennessee Tech. So I completed my master's degree in civil environmental engineering, started there in 87 and completed that in 90. I was a graduate research associate from '87 to '88, working on a funded grant project, coincidentally, again, a drinking water project where I conducted case studies for alternate disinfection practices for THM control. And if any of you would like to learn about that, I'll have a separate technical seminar after the, after the interview today. That was a funded project, and so I received a, a small stipend to help with, with my time in education. You will, you will see there that, that I was a graduate research associate from '88. After we submitted our draft report to the funding agency, it was gonna take them about 12 months to complete their review of that report. So I left school, moved to Nashville, took my first job, got married. My wife and I were expecting our first child in 1990, and I was working on my master's degree on the nights and weekends, and so was able to complete that in 1990. Also got my bachelor's degree there at the best engineering school in the southeast at Tennessee Tech, working there from '82 to '87. For my full-time there, I had, I worked part-time, I worked in the Water Resources Center Water Lab, conducting lab testing and sampling, I worked in the civil engineering office, worked in the motor pool, I cleaned out university cars and vans as they came back in from the travels for the day. I worked a summer for TDOT, I worked a summer for the town of Birdstown. I was actually in the mayor's outhouse race in 1983 and 1985, a little-known fact, many of you may recall the Ralph Emory Show, when he invited mayors in, and we finished, the mayor of Birdstown and our team finished second place in both of those activities. I was on the, I was ASCE Student Chapter President during my time there, leading our student chapter there for, for 12 months. And then also was the lead on the concrete canoe race team, and if you'd like to hear the stories about that, it's a whole nother topic that was a lot of fun. I was also a member of the CAIPSLON, which is Civil Engineering Honor Society, recognized civil engineering for their academic accomplishments. I was not a 4.0 student, but I maintained an adequate grade point average to be eligible for that group, while doing all these other fun things. Let's transition right now, I'd like to talk to you, you know, in something that Randolph asked us to include in our presentations, just to jump in and take a look at, you know, the vision, and maybe just have some comments and remarks about a few things, a little bit of a vision statement. I'd really like to start with the workhorse of our team, and that's our city staff. These numbers are, are no doubt comfortable to you all. We have 1,100 approved full-time positions, about 60 of those are open today according to the dashboard that, that Aaron sends out. I know we've watched the, watched the vacancies in, in the police department, but Chief Bowen reports to us that those are improving, and expect those to be at a very good spot at the start of the fiscal year, where, as we know, he's asked for some additional police officers. I think that, that I've really grown to appreciate this public safety issue, that we don't wanna lose ground in there in policing and crime prevention and our crime numbers. And so, for the city to continue to invest in those resources would be important for us for the next several years. You know, our recruiting, I, I think Darren and I being able to stand before you today as internal candidates, my goal for our city staff is for the city of Murfreesboro to be the best recruiting ground for advancement and promotion, especially for our upward positions. Certainly, we got a infill with entry-level folks from outside. But, but recruiting, focusing on internal first and then external where needed, also understanding the changing landscape of recruiting as, as we've seen in our recruiting practices and processes, all options have got to be open. Here's what we do know, that the institutional and operational knowledge of the city of Murfreesboro is really invested in our senior staff. You know, the, the, how we do it and why we do it, people, those long-term staff members, and the thought about what we've invested to get them to that point, and what, if, if they leave their job before their career time with the city, what it cost us to replace them. And it's, it's substantial. And so, working on some things where we can retain those long-term senior employees, why do we need to do that? Because we need them to pick up the philosophy and continue to do what they do, which is to see it, to do it, and then to teach it to the others. Focusing on training, HR's done a great job, this wasn't all my effort or all my idea, but certainly something that, that I was interested in many years ago, and that was additional training and resources for our staff. And, and, and we've implemented the learning management system and making that available to our staff to increase the opportunity for, for career advancement and upward mobility at the city. Leadership development and succession planning, Randolph has, has led us through some activities, some, some working activities where we've asked our senior leaders, "Hey, what, what do your staff resources look like? Who are your next leaders? What training do they need? What coaching up do they need?" And, and working in that succession planning exercise, and if you're familiar with some of the terminology there, the nine-box process that we went through to help our staff do that, and something that we'll continue to do with our leadership team and our supervisors to identify talent and people that, that have the ability to, to move up, and then also identify the gaps where they need additional training. Most people don't, you know, people management, process management is, is not a innate skill, it's actually a learned skill. And we teach technical very well, we could teach management and leadership better, and I think that's an area for us to focus on in the future. I did wanna look at just a couple of benefits things that have been on my mind for, for a while. You know, as we redid our pay scale a few years ago, we worked very hard on identifying the market rates and, and making those applicable to the market and setting up our steps in there, and early loading those for a quick five-year advancement. But one of the things that we kept talking about was compression, and, and so I thought, you know, we went, we did very well there, but I think there's an opportunity for us to also help recognize another element of a, an employee's success with the city. There's certainly the market rate, what that person would be worth in another, at another location. And we have to be sensitive to that, we, you know, we monitor that from time to time. But to go back and think about that institutional knowledge, that operational knowledge that are invested in our senior leaders, how can we make a difference to them? And I think it's in leader, it's in longevity pay. It doesn't participate in the market rate, it's not engaged in the pay scale, but it does allow us to identify that thing that is very important to the city of Murfreesboro, and that's what they know, and then using them to teach the next round of leaders. And so I think there's some work we could do there to maybe make a difference to those because of the time that you've been with the city of Murfreesboro, and not have it to interfere with the market pay, and it gives us maybe a little bit of relief on the issue called compression. Some of this is, we're still also working on, but, but looking at, at what happens for leave when somebody chooses to come to the city of Murfreesboro. I know, changing jobs costs, costs people. And so if we're asking them to take a chance on the city of Murfreesboro, and then not having leave for a period of time, or not recognizing that they left a job where they were maxed out on their leave, then maybe there's an opportunity there in that, in that area of leave for us to, to continue to work. I'd also like for us to consider a more formal education and certification assistance program, an employee scholarship program, if you will, where we could encourage that additional training, whether it's at the college level or at a certification level, working with some of our local educational providers, and giving them the opportunity to improve their, their skills and their education with this, with their job. Let's talk about city facilities and resources. No doubt, our, our rapid growth has, has caused us to outgrow and pass up some of our facilities and systems. And some of our tasks, quite honestly, we just have accomplished over the years because of hard work and effort. And nothing wrong with hard work and effort. So, you know, as I sit there and see our divisions and departments need facilities and need resources, you know, we need office space now, 2140, Tom, North Thompson Lane, we were able to get that project occupied, and then working at 316 Robert Rose Drive, we'll see that, that help with some of our office needs. But we still have a lot of office space that's needed, we still have people that, that don't have adequate workspaces, and we, we need to work on that. I think we need a training facility. Right now, we have the fire department training temporarily in the, in the old MED building. We would likely, will likely lose the training facility that we have on Main Street at some point, and so I think there's a need for a citywide training facility, Public Works South, Police Precinct on the west side of town, and we know we have a couple of fire stations queued up for some areas that, that are underserved or will be underserved with, with continued growth and development. And then on the city resources, and this is really the, the tools and things we use day-to-day in our jobs, and you, I think you recognized in the budget this year that there were a lot of personnel requests, but there was also a lot of systems request. And funding those things, that's hardware and software that we need to do our way, our daily work. And we're gonna have a significant investment proposed and needed to continue to be able to give our, our team the tools they need to move forward. That looks like workspace, it looks like facilities, it looks like hardware, it looks like software, and gives us a chance to, to keep our systems up to date and where they need to be to serve our citizens and our customers. Growth and development, you know, it's probably the, the area that I've worked most in in my career here at the city. And I like to think of vision as a forward look with what could be, with a foot in our history, looking back at where we've come from. It can be imaginative and it can be creative, but it does need a basis in reality. If your vision doesn't have a basis in reality, then it's gonna be a struggle to, to, to get it accomplished. So it does have to have a basis in reality. And I like to think of the city like a patchwork quilt, where we're completing that square by square and piece by piece. And when I was growing up, and on those cold snowy days, we'd sit down and cut out patchwork quilt squares, and Mom would occasionally let us jump on the sewing machine and stitch a few together. Now, these weren't works of art, and they didn't hang at the end of the bed on a quilt rack, they were just functional. But you certainly would know that in a patchwork quilt, that's an heirloom, that's a showpiece... But you certainly would know that in a patchwork quilt, that's an heirloom, that's a showpiece, there's a pattern, there's a vision, and there's a plan. And so we've got about 70 square miles of our quilt complete. That's the city limits today. And how we build a city is really one square at a time, one development at a time, one project at a time, one lot at a time. But it's following a pattern. It's following a vision. It's following a plan. This group, the mayor and council, for the time that you'll serve your careers here, you'll have the opportunity to set that pattern for the next pieces of the quilt we'll be working on. And so it's real critical and real serious business for us to think about that and our opportunity as we move forward for the next five to 10 years in our time here with the city. Now, we do have a chance to replace some pieces from time to time. And I would equate that to like the downtown area, where we could see some reuse and repurposing and even some redevelopment opportunities, where we'll completely take a piece of our quilt out and stitch another one in. But the reality is, is that one day, the quilt will be finished. And you say, when does that come? Well, one or two things is going to limit it. It's either going to be our available land, or it's going to be the resources to provide the city services to serve those lands. Now, the 2035 land use plan brought that point home to so many of us on city staff. If you had a chance to participate in that, maybe you realize that as well. And that is that there is not an infinite boundary to the city of Murfreesboro. And I'm not sure that we really recognized that and wrestled with it early in my career with the city. But as we move forward, that's a reality. The city of Murfreesboro has a practical boundary. In 1998, the city required, or the state required communities to develop an urban growth boundary. Our negotiated urban growth boundary included 160 square miles of area around the city of Murfreesboro. At that time, we may have been 35 or 40 square miles. So it was a huge swath of land. Can I tell you what's happened now? County developments on Septic and Step have developed on our boundary and have basically isolated the city from being able to advance that initial plan. And I'm not saying that that's good or bad. I'm only saying that to make the point that there is a practical boundary to where the city will go. With those developments that are on Septic or Step, they will not be sewer customers. And if they're not sewer customers, there's not enough economic incentive to extend sewer into and through those basins and onto the other side. So one of the updates that you saw in our future land use map was what we call that service infill boundary, really scaling back and looking at what can we provide services to in the next five to 10 to 15 years? What is practical for us to add to the city of Murfreesboro? On top of that, we're certainly all aware, acutely aware of the limitations we have in our sewer system and how we're working through all of that. So just say here with this point that one day, our patchwork quilt will be finished, the city of Murfreesboro will be complete, and our development will transition from green fields to infill and redevelopment opportunities, which will be another season of life for the city of Murfreesboro. Maybe focus on a few areas, and I'll try to move through these quickly. This is a very significant component of our community. In the last three years, $1.5 billion in residential permitting was completed. We permitted 4,688 residential units in that three-year period. Just a quick estimate, that added, added or will add about $4 million per year to our city property tax base using the 1.5 billion. That number does not include the real estate. It only includes the building. So I haven't tried to go back and incorporate land into that. But just using that number and a modest estimate of the assessment, that would generate about $4 million per year in additional taxes just over that three-year period. Listen, the residential is essential for good housing stock in families. Those are the building blocks of our communities, our people that live here and move here. I think it's important for us in the next few years to pay attention to the lifestyle elements of those. And we can certainly build a box with four walls, and we can provide adequate space for the things that you need inside a home. But the lifestyle elements, if those homes are not supporting the lifestyle of the people who live there, then it's going to force that resident to want to move, to find a place that will provide that lifestyle, whatever it is, whatever season of life they're in, and whatever they need at that time. And so I think as we look at developments and as I talk to our development staff, I say, pay attention to the lifestyle. I'll give you an example. Blackman Farms came in to the West Murfreesboro Market. It was probably, it was our first small lot development, and Mayor, I think you'll remember that one very well. There were some 6,000-square-foot lots in there, and the Jones Company put 3,000-square-foot homes on 6,000-square-foot lots. And as I recall, the numbers were $60 a square foot, so you could get into that property for $180,000. And families just looked at it and said, wow, I can't believe it. We can get a $3,000, $3,000-square-foot home for this rate. Here was the challenge. They had four drivers, but two places to park. They wanted to fence their backyard, but we said no because there was an alley or drainage unit. They didn't have room for the pool that they wanted. They didn't have room for the backyard expansion. And so I just said that to say, that really reinforced with me as I dealt with those permit applications for accessory structures and talked to the residents out there, pay attention to the lifestyle. It helps retain a stable population, and it reduces the transient nature that we could get into with those units that don't meet their lifestyle. It also encourages buy-in. And I think that's really important for our residents to buy in to our vision, to our community, to be a stable participating member of it. Commercial.
Sam, I don't want to cut you short, but I know the council has a lot of questions that they want to ask based on how, so we may want to get a closing point so we can go through all of our questions.
Yes, I'll do that then. Let me say this about commercial. It follows rooftops. They know Murfreesboro Market before they get here. What I would say to this is what we, my last statement here, how do we find the game changers? We're going to get the same restaurants. We're going to get the same essential services as our market will dictate, but how do we find the game changers? And I think that is our brand. I think that is our data, and I think that's our presence in the market. And I think the brand and presence in the market needs some, it needs some work. Industrial, we're historically a blue-collar community. It's a significant driver, lots of paychecks that come here. I will say this, we attract similar to what we have. And so we see, as we look at economic development, a lot of that comes along. We have a limited supply of ready-to-go land. And so I think for the industrial, as we work with potential projects, we learn this, that those ready-to-go lands are not out there. But we have some areas, the Rutherford Boulevard area, the Joby Jackson area, east of Manchester Highway, Cherry Lane and 840, the north and the northwest loop. And I think we need to pay attention to what of those lands we want to activate industrial and how we can. Office is soft, but one of the things we know is that Murfreesboro isn't branded well as an office market. And brand is what other people think about you. Branding is what we do about it. We're not positioned well right now for an office market, but maybe that's something that we can do as the office market rebounds and as we see the office market rebound and grow in Nashville with investments like Oracle and others, that we could see some of that spill over here. Hospitality and tourism, I think, could play a significant role for us. Chamber reports that we're 1,000 rooms short in Rutherford County. Last reporting year, the county came in seventh statewide for tourism dollars. I think there's some low-hanging fruit there that I would like to see us capitalize on. Maybe one of the opportunities might be a downtown conference center. And I'm not saying a convention center, but a conference center, smaller rooms, smaller space, but to target those meetings that are smaller in nature, that struggle to find adequate spaces today in our community. Maybe it's expanded sports facilities that cater to an indoor market. We have a very good outdoor market. Maybe it's leveraging our parks and our rivers, our scenery in Murfreesboro outdoors. The thing that excites me most about the opportunities ahead is really placemaking. How do we make Murfreesboro special? How do we make that vision become reality? The market factors will give us a lot of the same housing. It'll give us a lot of the same retail, the stores, the restaurants, similar employment. But that placemaking, the sense of community, it can be a focus for us and an intention for us, an investment for us. It's those small things that make our quality of life better and make Murfreesboro unique, things like our parks and our downtown and Town Creek and entertainment, our churches, our history, our nature and our outdoors, our scenery. Some challenges I see in the days ahead is about four slides, Mayor, and I'll be done. The rate of growth, high rates of growth in communities is hard to sustain. And in fact, communities throw out their own anchors. We've thrown out our own anchors. We implemented an impact fee. We raised our property tax. We raised our sales tax. We raised our permit fees and our service fees, and we've done that over and over again. The county is working through that as well, which also affects the economic viability of our growth and development. So we wound up throwing out our own anchors in that. Why do we do that? Because we can't sustain the services and the growth. A more moderate level of growth, I'm pro-growth as anybody, but a moderate level of growth is more comfortable and sustainable for us. But we also don't want that other thing to happen, which is no growth, because you can't stay at zero. You're either growing or you're losing ground. Infrastructure is going to be an issue for us, roads and transportation, schools and school funding, sewer system capacities, permitted discharge limits. All of those are issues we're facing right now every day, and we'll face them for the next several years. I will say, it's hard for me to imagine Murfreesboro without significant sewer discharge capacity. But we need, and we need to continue to pursue the technical prep for political and legal in that space, and then maybe even talk about a Plan B for alternate capacities in that area of sewer system capacities and management. Erosion of revenue, our stable forms of revenue are constantly under attack. The sales tax due to internet sales years ago, penny's coming off the county property tax from education that impacts our city schools, changes in state shared revenue distribution from the state level, which is something we don't have control over but happens from time to time in the legislature. And monitor, audit, report it, respond to it. Short-term actions for us is something we have scheduled, is conduct a special census in 2025 to capture what I think feels like about 20,000 additional residents. That would equal several million dollars per year of additional state shared revenue. Then I would also say to this group is let's maintain the vision. Let's develop a resilient, durable vision for our community. Let's get buy-in, and let's stay committed to determine, committed and determined, the good things in our community are hard. They take time. I've not seen us accomplish a good thing in our community without effort and work and occasional failures and reworks and revisits to do that. And I think you would share the same sentiment. And so let's not take the convenient for, in exchange for something that doesn't line up with our vision. If our vision's not right, it's okay to change it. So I just encourage us in that. And with that, I'm going to shut this windmill down and be ready for any questions you've got.
Have a seat, Sam. Jamie, we'll start with you until Kirk gets back.
Okay.
We'll work our way back around the room this time, if that's okay.
So I am new to the city. I did not realize you had so many roles in the city. So that's incredible. Thank you for your service. I love that you have experience in so many different departments. I think we all have to acknowledge that the city manager role is clearly different than the roles you have served in, in a few ways. So to become city manager, what do you think your day-to-day will look like? What do you envision it looking like so that you can help push our vision forward?
So the opportunity as an executive director in that role, I really saw my job as the connection between city administration, the mayor and council, and our operating departments. And I really saw my job there is to communicate the expectations and then give them the resources and tools that they need to do their job. And I think that one of the primary functions that the city manager will have and has today is serving as that connection between the mayor and council and the city administration for implementation of the plans and the vision, but also to make sure that the resources are out there that are needed for the day-to-day work to accomplish. We're a service organization. That's what we do. We provide government services. And so we've got to have our resources in place to help with that. So I think it will be very similar, but at a much higher capacity than what I did as executive director.
If you had to give the current relationship or the dynamic between the city manager's office now, so not so much Craig Tindell specifically, but the way the city manager's office works with council, what letter grade would you give that?
From my viewpoint, I think it gets an A. I think there's been an openness of access to city manager and city staff with the mayor and council. I think there's been opportunities for open dialogue, one-on-one, and communication of vision, communication of expectations, and also I think there's been an opportunity there for working out issues.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Kirk? Sam, your vision for economic development for the city of Murfreesboro as we move forward?
I think we have, as I covered in the slide, I think we have the opportunity to find some difference makers and be available for some difference makers for our community. Some of the things in economic development come to our community because of the market that it is. And that will continue to happen. But I think, quite honestly, our opportunity is to go out there and find those difference makers, whether that's in the commercial and retail space or in the industrial and office space. I think it's also important, because of our history and because of the number of people that are supported by it, I think it's important that we pay attention to industrial. There are a lot of people, a lot of paychecks, a lot of our economic energy in Murfreesboro is coming in because people are in 40-hour-per-week industrial jobs. And I think continuing to attract, not warehouse jobs, not tow motor operator jobs, but really advanced manufacturing skilled jobs in that area would be an important focus for us.
Now, if you become city manager, it's very important that you have leadership skills. What type of leadership skills do you have? And also, does that include diversity in your leadership?
So the, you know, I wouldn't necessarily go out and try to catalog or categorize myself to some of the leadership skills, but my personal efforts is I try to coach, and I try to cheerlead, and I try to teach. And those are things that come natural to me and how I communicate with the people I work with, and I'll continue to do that. Occasionally, I might come across as a lecturer or teachee, but that's just what feels comfortably to me to help communicate the issues with our team. Diversity to me is really, you know, differences of traits and differences in backgrounds and differences in experience. I think diversity is a great tool for us to incorporate different visions and ideas. Diversity gives us strength. Unity and purpose, however, will give us the ability to go forward. So managing a diverse workforce, a diverse leadership team, so that we can take advantage of the strengths that gives us and then focus it on a unity forward. We all need to be pulling the wagon in the same direction. And so part of that leadership is to corral and harness those diverse viewpoints and visions into a unified direction for the city.
Sean?
Hey, Sam. I'm going to ask you the same questions I asked Darren, and Kirk already asked one of mine, so I'll skip that one. You can't do a SWOT analysis in an hour with an organization this large, or probably even in a whole day. But just what's one thing from But just what's one thing from strength, weakness, opportunity, threats you see in the organization currently?
One in each category or one thing?
Yeah, one in each category.
I think our strength today is with our staff. We have a good staff out there. I think one of our weaknesses moving forward will be maintaining that staff, maintaining the workforce. There's a lot of competition right now for hiring. What was the other two weakness?
Weakness, opportunity threat?
The opportunities for us, I think, are really in this area of economic development. We have generally had, I wouldn't call it passive, but not an extremely active approach in economic development. We've gotten some opportunities that just showed up in our door. I would like for us to be a little more aggressive in that and maybe a little more focused in that with a specific vision and targeting. And I think, you know, threats in, really maybe in the, one threat I would see is just being able to maintain a good public safety, good police capacity, just constant struggle for that. And, you know, it's almost like chief is dealing with, you know, with some things every day on there. He's, we made a lot of progress there and we will always have some frictional unemployment or frictional openings there because of retirement and replacement. But I think the opportunities or the threats there, you know, will need some attention in the weeks and months and even years ahead.
All right. And my last question, there seems to be a perception of a past employee having some tentacles inside the city staff. Do you think that is a problem? And if that is a problem, how do you cut the head off that snake?
So there are, you know, maybe opportunities for advice and input and learned experiences for all of us. We all have our groups, our resources that we listen to. I think if there's a perception that that's out there, I don't know that it's true, but I do know that there are still a lot of employees who are retired who have a love for the city and an interest in the city. And when I run into them from time to time, they ask about the welfare of the city. And that's not one or two individuals, but it's community-wide and really build, I mean, you build friendships with folks. And I think at the end of the day, you appreciate the time you had with past employees, you appreciate their opinion, but you also remember that your job is to make decisions and do what's best for the city of Murfreesboro regardless of any prior or current relationships. Mr. Mayor, you give back my time.
Sam, how would you handle conflict or disagreements among your team? In other words, would you feel comfortable providing constructive feedback to a team member?
Absolutely. You know, I think some of the early training we did in service excellence dealt with establishing expectations. And the first rule in service excellence is identifying those expectations. And that's true in any relationship. It's true with my relationship with each of you. It's true with my relationship with people that I work on the leadership team. It's true with the people that I supervise and that, you know, report to me is the first rule is to establish expectations. And then if we're not able to meet those expectations, then the next rule is managing the expectations. And that's something I've tried to do over the years and just working to establish expectations with others and managing those. And sometimes that includes areas where you're not meeting expectations, but also the opportunity to deal with disagreements that may not be related to expectations but differences of opinions. Very comfortable in working with that ground. I think Mr. Wade asked about it, when you have the diversity of backgrounds and diversities of opinions that would be in your workforce, sometimes you do have a tug-of-war that you've got to participate in there. But I'm very comfortable in working in that space and then allowing those things to work their way out. My advice to our staff when we have those work conflicts is put it in a work box. This is not a personal conflict. This is a disagreement about work issues. And then we will deal with the disagreement, we'll analyze the disagreement and then move forward with a solution. But at the end of the day, put that in your work box and don't put it in your personal box and don't, you know, think somebody's out to get you or carrying a grudge and they're just trying to shoot you down or undermine your career or something like that.
And would you have trouble, let's say, somebody from the outside, whoever may be coming in on your team and, you know, telling them what to do or the city should do that and you maybe see a pattern of your team going that way, you know, listening to outside sources? How would you nip that in the bud?
Well, I think establishing clear communication expectations and clear direction expectations. You know, the city manager serves as that one responsible person for the day-to-day operations of city government. And so establishing and then expecting the team that would support in that to have that clear understanding that direction needs to come from the city manager and certainly inputs from a variety of sources and opinions from a variety of sources, never necessarily a bad thing, but at the end of the day, the direction needs to come from the city manager. And then my job in that would be making sure that that direction lines up with the vision and policy and expectations of this body.
As you look at the demographics of our city and you look at our workforce demographics, how would you try to make a difference in that? What would you do to change the demographics?
Change demographics? I think, you know, my-
The workforce, yeah.
Yeah, I think that for the demographics and the workforce, I think making sure that our hiring practices are free of influences from traits, backgrounds, and experiences and making sure that those recruitments are open, making sure that our internal promotion policies are also free of those influences of traits and backgrounds and experiences. And then, but at the end of the day, I think making sure that the best qualified external candidate or internal candidate then is added to our workforce would be my goal in our hiring and recruiting and promotion practices.
And my last question, as we look at different bids that go all over the city, and I may be wrong, since like the same people kind of get the same job, the bids. I don't see minority businesses getting any of the city contracts. What would you do to make sure that the bidding process includes some minority businesses?
So I'm not aware of any data on the minority statuses of businesses that we examine or look at. So I can't really have a statement on whether minority businesses are getting work with the city or not. That's not a piece of information that we collect or data that we have. What I will say is that for a lot of the work that we do, there are minimum standards of bonding capacity or financial capacity that have to be met. And those things are what, in most cases, are going to qualify a business to be eligible to bid on city work. And so making sure that we get the best value out of that and at the same time that we're following our state and our city procurement rules would be my goal for our procurement process.
Thank you.
And I think having minority representation in there and having the opportunity to have that, certainly in favor of that, you know, would point to some of the areas where we do have good minority representation on some of our professional services contracts that we're using today and have that segment of our market represented.
Awesome. Thank you, Adam.
Sam, if you were hired as city manager, what is the one major change that you would like to see happen in city government in your first year on the roll? What's that change that you'd like to see happen? Why do you say that?
So I don't know that I would really classify anything as a major change. I think there's always some opportunities for us to grow and develop. I think the one thing that I would like to see us focus more on is in this area of succession planning, training, you know, building up our team, building up our staff and being able to identify those upwardly mobile opportunities. I think that gives us stability in our workforce. I think it helps us in a lot of ways. And so if I had a focus that I really wanted to look at, it would be continuing to make advancements in that and becoming, if I could say it this way, a little more formal. We've, with our leadership team and our HR team, just in the last few years, we, and I've worked here for 20, almost 25 years, and until just a couple of years ago, I never had a performance review. And that's something we implemented and to start having that conversation. And I think the next step of that is to also use that as an opportunity for coaching and succession planning and identification of our workforce to give them opportunity with the city.
Okay. What is the biggest issue facing the city of Murfreesboro, in your opinion, and how would you address it?
So I think where I see the most conflict is in growth and development. When I think about the items that come before this board and the things that we spend a lot of effort on in our community, it's really related to growth and development. If we weren't a fast-growing community, I dare say that the city government would be fairly routine and fairly mundane. Approve the budget, pay the bills, provide the services. But the added pressure of growth and development on our system, on our finances, on our resources, on our services, I think it has been and will continue to be the most challenging issue for our community.
You've done a lot. I mean, you went through your resume and everything that you've done in your career. Resumes always have the bright shiny spots, as I call them. Tell me about that time where you failed in a previous role in government and just learned from it and became a better leader manager as a result of failing.
Yeah, I think the one area where I've matured with the city is not always having to be right. And I think what I have learned, especially in the last five to seven years, is I don't have to be right for it to be good for the city. And so I would say that not just one particular instance in that case, but maybe just a general shaping and growth and maturing of Sam as a city staff member and as a, you know, good representative of city government, it is in that area. And just, I don't always have to be right for the city to win.
Okay. A little while ago, I'd asked you about the biggest issue. So what's, you know, the biggest opportunity facing? I asked you about the biggest challenge and you talked about that in terms of growth. And what's the biggest or greatest opportunity that's in front of us and how would you handle that?
I think, again, it's going to be in the area of economic development. Others are the things where we can change the trajectory of our community. I think, you know, we continue to get what the market brings us in residential and office and retail. And I think that really the areas for game changers are going to be in those special things. And they do so much for our community, but, you know, we could debate on whether Buc-Ee's is a game changer or not, but it is a special opportunity. Buc-Ee's will be an economic engine for that part of our community. They have more annual visitors than Dollywood. 14,000 people a day walk through the door at Buc-Ee's. They spend a pocketful of cash. 70% of those people are from somewhere besides Murfreesboro. They've driven at least an hour to stop at Buc-Ee's. That's money that comes into our community and we've got 15 acres tied up at an interstate interchange. We might debate over whether Costco is a benefit to our community. But when we looked at the opportunities that Costco brought to us, when they first presented and because we partnered with them in developing that site and providing some of the infrastructure, we asked some very pointed questions to them that we were not normally able to ask and the information we're not normally able to get. But we needed to know, you know, what's your store sales look like? We can't get that information today on businesses that operate in Murfreesboro. You say we collect sales tax from them. Well, we don't. The state does and then they send that sales tax back to us. But we ask Costco, what's your annual taxable income looks like, our annual taxable revenue look like here? What's your benefits package look like? And so when we first started talking to them in earnest, I mean, they'd been looking at our community for several years before they actually came in and started, you know, the agreement process. They said our average store taxable sales, $160 million a year. Before we got the store open, that number had went to $200 million per year. Now, the city gets through our local option sales tax, 2.75% of that. The math's pretty easy. You know, that's three to four million dollars per year. You know, is some of that cannibalized from other commercial vendors in Murfreesboro? Certainly. But their trade boundaries go way beyond the city of Murfreesboro. And so that's money that's coming into our community that we did. So I would say that the opportunities that we face, that we have in economic development, and that's going to be in job creation or in those other areas of revenue creation and preservation, would be critical to us moving ahead.
My last question before we go to Bill. What is it that Sam Huddleston would bring to the role as city manager that other candidates wouldn't bring? What is it that you have? What's the advantage of hiring a Sam Huddleston to this role?
I think for the 25 years that the city has paid for, the institutional and operational knowledge and that I have today, you know, I joked when I talked about my background here that I had hair and it had color in it when I started. And I look around now and I'm one of the long-term employees. And I think the advantage for me is what you guys have already paid for, and that's to have had me on the payroll for 25 years, making myself available for whatever need the city has. Blood plane manager, community development director, emergency response coordinator in the middle of the night, lead-on annexation study, whatever. But what I would bring to the table is that institutional, operational knowledge. And because of the path that developed for me at the city, I got to see a lot of things. I've got to experience a lot of things. I got to do a lot of things. I got to be in a lot of meetings. I got to interact with a lot of people and learn how the city does business, the why we do what we do, the how we do it. And I've also had the opportunity to learn that and to see it and then also to try to teach it to others.
Shay, I'll turn it back to you. Over to Bill.
Thank you. First, I want to commend you for making yourself available and seeking this position. It speaks to a lot of things and I've enjoyed conversing with your references, called them all, had a chance to have them tell me a lot of good things about you. So you're very fortunate to have those kind of friends and those kind of people that think the world of you. The question that I have, uniquely, your career has put you in a position to see different people, different personalities flesh out the role of city manager. I can imagine in looking at them, there's got to be some woulda, coulda, shoulda that have come across your mind in the process of that. And I'm not asking to mention names, but what have you learned from how you have seen other people flesh out this role of city manager that you will do differently or learn from their mistakes or things that they have done successfully?
Maybe go back to a little bit of my response to Mr. Maxwell. I think what I have learned is I don't always have to be the smartest guy on everything. I'm- I know today, sitting here, I don't know everything about city government. I don't know everything about city management. I do know what I'm comfortable with, and, and I think what I would learn maybe from having watched others, both good and bad, is, is surrounding yourself with subject matter experts, listening to their opinion, trusting their opinion, and then using that to help me as I lead, guide, and direct the city.
The, the role that the city manager is expected to play is kind of unique in that you're supposed to have a vision, but you have other bosses. And not only that, you have seven bosses. And, you know, I'd like to hear how, I mean, I know you set an A as far as the relationship, but there's always room for improvement in understanding and communicating with people that will ultimately make that decision. How, is there a plan, or have you given any thought to the fact of how we could improve the communication between the city manager's office and the, and the council? I think I mentioned and thought about this, that I don't want to necessarily find out things on WGNS or Daily News Journal. What can you do to better inform and communicate with us so that we're better prepared to know what is on the horizon? Have you given some thought to what your plan would be to better that relationship and communication?
Well, I think it certainly revolves around communication. And I think it's, it's like giving to the church. If you give from the start, you'll be consistent in it. But if you give what's left over, you won't be very good at it. There's, there are a lot of demands on the city manager, and for that matter, any of our city leaders. And so communication with the, the bosses, as you say, it's got to be a first priority in making myself available. And then to the extent that this group would want regular and routine interactions, regular and routine updates, I think, I think you helping me understand how much you want, how much expectations you have, I think with, with all of the members of council and mayor that are in here today that, that already have a good working relationship with you, I think just then finding out how much of that you individually each want, and then how much you would want as, as a group. But it would really focus on, on establishing expectations and then executing that communication.
Well, let's see. Am I going to ask my last question yet? Give me just a second here. Your background and career is primarily in, as an engineer. And I think you, you would admit, whether you're an attorney or an engineer, you have a certain way of addressing problems, expectations for advancing your particular perspective and all that kind of thing. How do you, what do you see blind? Do you recognize that there are some weaknesses because of that training? And then will you address them? And how will you address those, you know, that particular bent that you as an engineer have for addressing problems?
So, so, you know, the classic engineering training teaches you black and white. It teaches you, in fact, I have on, I don't know if you guys can see it, but my graph paper shirt today, so that, you know, something back from my Tennessee Tech days and, sorry. And, and so for problem solving, it was very analytical and very methodical. And you started out on your graph paper, given, what, what do I know about this situation? What's required of me? What's, what, what are we trying to solve? And then what's my solution to that? And I'm going to draw a line under that, and I'm going to develop that problem set out. And so engineers in their education, and maybe even just in the way their brain works, start that way. Like, what do I know about a situation? And what do I know? What I will tell you is that in my time in, in city government is, that I've learned, is you can be technically correct and politically incorrect. That you can be, that the facts may be on your side, but it's maybe not the, the best direction for the city. And so I think one of the things that, that a leader has to be able to do is, is understand the difference in those. And if you say, you know, you've got to be politically astute, listen, we, we all work in a political organization. Our homes are political, not in the sense of Democrat versus Republican, but in our personal interest and focus. When you think about politics at the root, it is, I want to, I want to get it my way. I want to get it how I like it. So, so, but understanding in that area of, of being politically astute, what is in the best interest of the community, what's in the best interest of the city of Murfreesboro, whether it's my analyzed solution or not. And so taking off that engineer's hat and then putting on that leader's hat to, to maybe come up with the best approach to something would be my thoughts there.
My last question is, how do you perceive or look at your role or place in this organization if you're not the one that's chosen to be city manager?
It's, it's, it's an opportunity to serve. You know, I didn't, I didn't come to the city of Murfreesboro in the last century to, with a specific career path in mind. I, I started out, my, my goal and my advice to, to any young employee at the city is to make yourself valuable to the organization. And I've tried to do that. I've, one of the things that Craig said to me the last time he and I sat down for a review, he said, "Sam, you're willing to take on anything." And I, and that's not because I'm necessarily the smartest guy to take it on, but I see it as an opportunity to serve a need that the city might have at that time. And so I would see my time with the city being an opportunity to continue to serve and, and for me to be, again, make myself valuable for whatever role that's, that's before me.
Thank you, Bill. Sam, I've got three quick questions. Mine are, mine are easy questions. The first one, and I think you worked under this city manager like I did, that if you have a council that maybe doesn't, maybe you have one council member, or you have, you have a direction you think the city needs to go. And this one city manager would always say, I don't, if he didn't agree, hey, you get your, you work on getting your four votes and I'll work on getting mine. How would you handle if you have a divided council on an issue?
I think, Mayor, going back to, to identifying those things that are in the best interest of the city, and, and I don't get a vote, but, but hopefully you would trust, you would trust me to have an opinion on that and maybe working in that space to develop a consensus out of that group. Certainly, there, there are opportunities for a, for a body of two or more, actually, to, to have disagreements and then to, to be able to identify that common ground and move forward.
That's called marriage, by the way.
That's right. And it's called raising kids, right?
Exactly right, yeah. So Sam, my next question is, what are your personal organizational skills that would make you a successful city manager? And how would you expect your team to mirror those?
I wouldn't necessarily expect mine, I'll start with the last part first. Wouldn't necessarily expect them to mirror mine. I would expect them to mirror the ones of mine that helped them do their job and helped them make, make themselves a better per, better employee. I think, I think I do my best work in teams. I do my best work in, in groups. And so my, my leadership skills are generally in trying to develop a consensus in our team and then chart a path forward. And, and I would look for some of our staff to pick up that particular thing and move it forward. And I think that goes back to something I've learned while working where it is, it don't always, I don't always have to be right for the city to win. But I, I do want to be a good, effective manager in, in, in building consensus, whether it's among staff or with this body, in the direction that we move forward. I, I do have very strong opinions on a lot of things, and, as, as you all do. But I also think that I am mature enough and wise enough and hopefully would have the wisdom to help this group and, and help us move forward through, through any of those.
Good answer. Last question. There's some extreme positives for having people in the organization be able to rise up and assume these positions. I think that's the role of leadership, to train those up-and-coming leaders. The negatives are, you're, you've already have a history with the city. So how do you divest yourself from your previous role with the city? So for example, if someone doesn't agree with a decision that the planning director makes, and they know that you've been involved in planning in the past, how do you divest yourself where someone calls you a city manager and says, "I want you to get involved in this"?
Yeah, and, and that happens today, quite honestly. You know, I, I go back to the, to the individual or to the situation, try to understand that, and then let that leader do their job. You know, I'm not, I'm not a, the city attorney, I'm not the finance director, I'm not the planning director, the building codes director, and I would have, in most of those cases, very little business correcting them technically. And, and in just the recent days, we, we've just worked through some things internally that I, the people were calling me and asking me about it. And I said, "I need to," I said to myself, didn't say this to them, I said, "Certainly I'll look into it, I'll have a conversation about that." But I said, "I need to let the staff work this through. I can give them some guidance, I can help them here and there, but at the end of the day, I need them to arrive at the, at the answer that's going to be best to move it forward."
Thanks, Sam. Sam, I think I speak for everyone, and I'll tell you the same thing we told Mr. Gore. Thank you for your service to the city. If anything, you know, what you've done while you've been here. I'm one of the old guys that has, we've all grown up together, so I really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity. So what we'll do, we're going to excuse Sam, and then we will go straight in to our item two, which is discussion and, and selection of the city manager. Thanks, Sam. Appreciate it, buddy.
Thank you.
Look at you. Proud of you. Nice shirt.
Council members, is, does everyone feel okay moving to the next step?
I'm going to run to the bathroom, but otherwise, y'all go.
Are there any comments?
I think we're extremely blessed that we have two very high-quality candidates. I do feel that one candidate was, showed a lot more vision on top of his experience than just experience-based. And in my opinion, that, that person kind of stood out a lot more than the other.
I concur. I think we're blessed you got two great candidates. Very qualified, years of service to the city. You know, the process story with Randall's team and the ratings per competency, and I came into this with a very, you know, open mind, let's see what they both said. And, you know, there was those four bottom things and those competencies, and I do think it, one candidate did clearly, to me, kind of stand out, especially from a vision standpoint. Where you want to take the city, where you want to go, how do you lead, style, whatever you want to call it. So I do, do think it's very telling, so to speak.
I think the interviews were great. Here again, I echo what everyone is saying about, they were very good candidates. You know, I, I feel that either one could lead the city. But I feel like one thing that we really need improvement in, that's been, I guess, since I've been here, is the relationship with the employees. And one candidate was very adamant about bringing us together as a city and as an That's what got my attention. And the fact that, in looking out in the future, having steps seems like one, I caught that he has steps he's going to follow. And I feel like, not that the other one will not, but I feel like he's very strong in, you know, conflict resolution. So I think one candidate did, in my opinion, stick out above the other.
Yeah, I, I want to say I appreciate the process. You know, a lot of times when you have a change, particularly in a leadership position like this, it's an opportunity to evaluate where you are as an organization and listen to some of the responses, even for us to formulate questions. Quite honestly, I appreciate my colleagues here and the questions that you've asked. There are things that need to be addressed. And, and you know, sometimes I think we get kind of in the routine of dealing with, you know, the day-to-day things that come before us, and this bigger picture of the organization doesn't, we don't spend a lot of time on it. So this gives us an opportunity to say, okay, how can we do better as councilman, as city manager and all? And I think both of them gave us a, a picture of where we are as an organization. And hopefully, I think, regardless of how we come out, that, that we end up, you know, getting an opportunity to make things better where they can be made better. We're, you know, making good, better, and better bests kind of thing. I think we, we all feel like there are a lot of good things happening in our, in our community. I was thinking as we were talking, it's almost like, you know, the relationship between that city manager's position and us, and I've seen it in, you and I have both seen it with different people, and it's almost like a dance. You know, we, we have to learn to move together and know how to respond to each other. Some people have it, you know, I'm going to count to four, and others have different ways of fleshing that out. I think one did show me that they're at least willing to entertain a, looking at ways. I don't know that anybody has the answer. I don't think there is an, an answer. I think it's going to have to be how we interact with them and how they interact with us. And you really never know, even though we've got all this history with these two folks that have been with the city for a long, extended period of time, until that person is in that role, you don't really know how they're going to flesh it out. So, but I have confidence in one of the person, in one of them to do a better job than others, than the other. My trust is, in my last question, my trust is that we really kind of need both these people in our organization. They have skills and something to add to each other. I think if one is selected, the other person could benefit from having that person as a part of the organization. And if the other one's picked up, I think that the skills of that person needs to be still within our organization. So my hope is that we'll continue to have both these people work for the city, regardless of what our decision is to take.
Can you, Kurt, you have anything?
We had two good candidates.
Yeah. I was telling, a stakeholder called me yesterday to ask about the process, and I said that it was a difficult decision, but that we were very fortunate and blessed as a city to have two amazing candidates that we have worked with on a regular basis. We're not just throwing a dart at a dartboard and hoping we get somebody we can trust. We have good relationships with both of them. So whoever becomes the next city manager, at least we are ready to get to business and, and serve the people of Murfreesboro. You know, I, I'm still supportive of looking at external candidates. And I don't know where the rest of the council is on that, but I still am supportive of looking at external candidates. But I think for the near future, we have two great candidates here. You know, both are highly competent and very valuable to the city. You know, I learned a lot about each of them through this process and, and like Vice Mayor Shacklet, through talking to other leaders in the city and stakeholders about their relationships with both Mr. Gore and Mr. Huddleston, I learned a lot about them. I think both of the candidates tend to work in the weeds. They're both very in-depth, whereas I think Mr. Tendell is much more big picture. So I've been accustomed to that. So I think it's going to be a learning curve on council's part and on who we choose on their part to, to be a little bit more on their part to, to be a little bit more CEO-type, a little bit more big picture and delegate. And I think that's really important for the role. It, it's no secret based on my questions that I think there's room for improvement between the city manager's office and the city council. And like Vice Mayor Shacklet said, the level of communication, that's something that, that's, I've struggled with since I began my time on council, is finding out about things from the news that I didn't know about. And I'm, I, I personally think that relationship needs improvement, which is why I asked a question for the letter grade. And I think the candidates had very different answers to that question, which surprised me. One was lower than I thought it would be and one was much higher than I thought it would be. If I had to grade it, I'd give it a B minus. So they were kind of on both sides of, of, of me there. But we're, we're super lucky. We've got a hard decision to make. I hope that whoever ultimately does not advance to this position remains with the city because we need both of them. And, and that is, that is my hope. So that's all I have to say.
I think everything happens for a reason. I mean, going back and thinking about, you know, my, my political career started with Mr. Haley. And many of y'all who knew Mr. Haley or didn't know Mr. Haley, you always knew where you stood with him. And as a council member, I got called to the principal's office several time, several times. When we transitioned, you know, so, so the, the organization that Darren and, and Sam both described about not being able to really talk a lot, transitioned to Rob. And Rob was the right fit at the time because Rob really helped transition that organization into a more open decision or open discussion. Then, you know, we transitioned to Craig and Craig really went from 20-some-odd department heads to, to going into the executive team, to establishing that executive team and giving the power to those directors and then managing it a very CEO macro manager. Craig definitely is not a micro manager. But, I mean, a lot of the things that have been mentioned today, and I appreciate the comments more than anything on what we've heard from all of our council members, I thought all of y'all's questions were prepared. You've really put some time and some thought into it. It really goes to show, I think, not necessarily weaknesses of our current city team, but things that can be improved, which is that communication. And, and that really goes, I don't think that's Craig, Craig's or Mr. Tendell's intent because I'll tell y'all, out of the four city managers I've worked with, Craig is by far, in my opinion, the best that we've worked with, has brought financial stability, he's brought management. I mean, Craig, and, and look, Craig has not gotten everything right. No city manager is going to get everything right. But he's really put this team in place to be, this executive team that has been able to flourish, that even us have these opportunities. But what I see moving forward is the person that the timing is right to really take more of that micro side and be able to get into a more in-depth, in-detailed, microscopic version of where we are as a city, which will help push that out. And I look through this, the executive team, who I think as a council, we have to rely on that executive team we have in place. They're not always going to get it right, but, you know, I, I look at Darren's grade, he was a 93.75 percent. Sam was an 81 and a quarter percent. And then you look at the four, in my opinion, the four most, three most critical points. We have leadership and management. Darren was a four. Vision and innovation, which clearly is important as our city. He was a 3.6. And then relationship management and management style was a 3.9. And that's nothing negative towards Sam at all. But, you know, the bad thing, counsel, about this process is it's a very public process and there's not anything I'm saying that I wouldn't say to Sam if, if I were sitting behind closed doors. But in my opinion, I think the, the, the choice is pretty clear on, on who we, who I, I feel like needs to be in that position and I think that's Darren. So.
I'll make a motion to start contractor negotiations with Darren Gore.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Adam, will you call the rule?
I will. This is Everwater.
Aye.
Mrs. Kells-Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
No.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, that's six one. So the next step will be if the council will permit, Adam and Randolph will work on a contract and Randolph will work on sort of the pay scale of that contract. And then it will be very similar to the other ones that we have done for, for the city management. And then that would come back to the council for final ratification and hopefully that Mr. Gore would accept that, accept that. Do you might have any questions on that? All right, real quickly, I do want to publicly say to Randolph and your team, thank you for putting this together. Y'all have, when I say organizational skill, I've, I've had the chance over the last two or three weeks to spend some time in Randolph's office and you can, you can absolutely tell how organized he is, how clean your office is. Randolph, y'all, y'all have done a great job the last, well, the last several years. But the last month, you guys have done a fantastic job going through this process.
Thank you.
So we really appreciate y'all.
What is he called?
HR guy. HR guy comes through.
Seeing no, council members, if, if y'all don't mind, I will leave here and walk back and go talk to Sam and Darren both and let them know the decision. And that way, they're not reading it in the D and J, right Scott?
He just posted.
No, no. That's what we're talking about.